We do have AC though, but you just have to time it right. Like keep everything closed up and then hang out at the creek all day and then go back when it's a little cooler.
How much water, which creek is it? Like, uh, not a creek by life. How much water is in the creek? What, when I see creeks that are like barely like your ankles wet and then there's creeks there massive.
You can swim, yeah, you can fish.
Cool. Is it up into the mountains? It's a pretty long river. That's it. But most of Cluj is kind of central.
How close are you guys to that performance?
Recording in progress.
Pretty close.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
All right, let's get started. I hereby call the meeting to order of the City Council on September 11th, 24, 2024 to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adiego.
Here.
Councilmember Nogales.
Here.
Councilmember Nicholas.
Present.
Vice Mayor Flores.
Present.
And Mayor Coleman.
Here. Now, can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance led by our city manager, Sharon Rannells?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now on to agenda review.
No changes to the agenda. Mr. Mayor?
Do we have any announcements from staff?
We do have announcements from staff, Mayor, and I'll start off with just a few to the community. In relation to our upcoming election, we have been, I have been informed from the County of San Mateo Registration and Elections Division that on Friday, October 4th, registered voters will receive their ballots. And at that time, our ballot boxes will be open for the members of the public. We have one at City Hall. We have one in the front of City Hall on 400 Grand Avenue, one in the parking lot, that's a drive up. We have one outside of this facility right by the parking lot, and those are open 24, um, 24 hours, seven days a week. And also to impress the community that we will be hosting a candidate debate night, which will be held at this facility on Wednesday, October 16th at 6:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Marie Patea. I'm the Executive Assistant to the City Manager. And we have a few educational and fun events coming up. One is the Scam Stopper, which is a free in-person seminar to educate the community about cybersecurity and fraud. The first one is being hosted by Vice Mayor Flores at Rotary Terrace on Friday, September 13th at 11:30. And then the second one, being hosted by Mayor Coleman, is at Bury Bury Elementary on Thursday, September 19th, 7 to 8:30. Second, we have a ribbon cutting for the Karamazamoto Plaza and our new sculpture named Inspire. So please join us on Saturday, September 21st at 9:00. And the plaza is located on the corner of Grand Avenue and Airport Boulevard. And this is the same day as the Caltrain Electrification Launch Party. And lastly, please save the date for the mayor's state of the city, which will be here in the banquet hall, October 1st at 6:30. And that's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Angela Doodleau. I'm your Deputy Director of the Parks and Recreation Department. Adding on to Marie's announcement, if you're looking to spend a fun day with the city after you attend the opening of the Matsumoto Plaza, please join us at Concert in the Park. We're just over a week away. Staff are very excited. The event this year will be located on the Orange Park Picnic Meadow. And if you don't know where that is, it's right behind the sports field off of West Orange Avenue and Memorial Drive. We have a day of fun lined up, beginning at 11:30 AM and ending at 5:00 PM. And of course, we'll have great music by the El Camino High School Jazz Band, popular music band Blessed Union of Souls, and Grammy Award-winning Daz Band. We'll also have kids' activities, exhibitor booths representing city departments and local community groups, art and craft vendors, food trucks, and beer and wine sales. For more information, you can visit www.ssf.net/concert. And my second event announcement is calling all artists to the Explore Your Roots Art Show. Artists are invited to explore their roots by delving into cultural foundations, symbolic connections, and personal origins. Whether through the lens of heritage, abstract symbolism, or personal stories, what does roots mean to you? Eligible mediums include two-dimensional and three-dimensional artworks. The online art entry fee is $5 per entry, and this juried exhibit is open to local and regional residents 16 years and older. Art submissions must be received by Friday, September 27th, so you have a few more weeks to apply. And for more details, artists can check out the Current Opportunities for Artists tab on our webpage at ssf.net/culturalarts. And if you're not an artist, please join us for the exhibit opening weekend, where we'll have some special activities for the community on October 11th or 12th. And you can also just view the gallery in our extended exhibit from October 15th through the 25th. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coleman, Vice Mayor Flores, members of the council. Rich Lee, your Assistant City Manager, I have the final staff announcement for the evening. And it's about the new park at Linden Avenue and Pine Avenue. I just wanted to provide a brief update on the planning for the new park. Last week, we posted a website, a project website update to the project fact sheet, the FAQ, and the environmental summary report. That included a first-page summary of the findings. To reiterate what we have previously communicated, as with all land reuse projects, we conducted an environmental assessment in collaboration with the County of San Mateo and took steps to mitigate. Extensive environmental investigation work was performed. Some of the work was performed to meet regulatory requirements, and some of the work was performed out of an abundance of caution to ensure that the parcels are safe for park development. The project team continues to collect feedback on the design alternatives, both in person and online. Staff will be at the Concert in the Park on September 21st. And we're also hosting an Old Town Merchants Roundtable on September 27th. And we will also have a booth at the Centennial Way Park South Ribbon Cutting on September 29th. In addition, the online survey has received over 150 responses and will be live through the end of the month. The website for this and all of our park development work is available at www.ssf.net/parkprojects. Thank you.
That concludes our announcements from staffs. Moving on to presentation, item number one is a certificate of recognition to Nellie Santana of Nellie's Bridal Boutique.
All right, I can lead off with this. It is my honor to present this certificate to Nellie Santana, who owns a bridal shop, Nellie's Bridal Boutique. And Kron TV featured a story a few weeks ago about a bride-to-be having her wedding dress that was paid for missing by a wedding boutique that went out of business. And her wedding day was in a few days, and she now had no dress due to the closure. But our very own South San Francisco resident, Nellie Santana, came to the rescue with her bridal shop and provided her with her wedding dress for the big day at the very last minute. They were strangers, but Nellie heard about this story and saved the day. And this story is incredible because I've, you know, it was one of your coworkers when you used to work at Microsoft, who emailed the city council and asked that you be recognized. And these days, I'm usually running around town and I, you know, an individual recognized me and they asked if I knew Nellie and of the great story. And so you just random folks on the street in the neighborhood are just so excited about how you're contributing to the community. And that's just what South City is, right? At the root of it is people helping each other and making this community a better place for all. So I have this certificate for you, signed by the entire city council.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much. I do have a few words that I'd like to share with Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Thank you for inviting me. As you mentioned, my name is Nellie Santana, and I am the bridal owner of Nellie's Bridal Boutique. This recognition means a lot to me, and words can't express it. It reflects not just my efforts, but also the collective dedication and hard work of my family, my friends, as well as, you know, our supporting community and customers as well. As a proud Latina and small business owner, this moment, it's definitely a testament not only to my journey, but also to the strength and the resilience and determination of so many business owners in our community, especially in our South San Francisco community, which reflects the hard work, the sacrifices, and the dedication that have gone into building our business. But I stand here today not only for myself, but also for the South San Francisco community and to help those that are always in need. Thank you so much for this recognition, and I will continue to be a South San Francisco small business owner for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a certificate of recognition celebrating the Garden Club's 60th anniversary.
All right, I will also take this one. So the Garden Club, we are recognizing the Garden Club of South San Francisco and congratulate Sal Vitale and the Garden Club Restaurant and Bar Team on your 60th anniversary, wishing you many more enjoyable years, possibly 60 more years to come. I know you had a, and many more. And I know you had an incredible mass of celebration this past weekend as well.
I'd just like to say thank you to the city council and the city of South San Francisco for recognizing the Garden Club. As a, being born and raised in South City, I also appreciate the Garden Club. But, I mean, I only owned it for a few years, so the people that really should be recognized as a staff, Mike and Alicia Cassantini, who started in 1964, who are passed away now. Their daughter Kathy still works for me. The staff is amazing. I've got three kitchen staff members, Eddie, Miguel, and Gilberto, who have been with me or with the Garden Club for over 25 years. And without them, of course, and the patrons who have supported the restaurant all this time, this, this award is for everybody that's helped. So thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, proclamation recognizing September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As September begins, it brings with it National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a crucial period dedicated to raising awareness about the impact of suicide, providing support to those in need, and promoting mental health resources. This observance is a powerful reminder of our collective responsibility to address pressing issues of suicide, which affects thousands of individuals and families each year. Suicide unfortunately remains one of the most significant public health challenges in the United States. According to the NIH, over 48,000 people die by suicide annually, making it a leading cause of death, particularly among young adults and adolescents. The emotional, psychological, and societal repercussions of suicide highlight the urgent need for prevention strategies and community involvement. It is important to recognize that there are various causes and factors contributing to suicidal thoughts and actions, including mental health conditions, life stressors, and personal experiences. By understanding these complexities, we can better support those at risk and work towards effective prevention. Tonight, I am pleased to present a proclamation honoring Suicide Prevention Awareness Month to District 5 Resident and Vice President of the Board of NAMI San Mateo, Bianca Coleman, if you could join up on the podium. Ms. Coleman, like I said, is Vice President of NAMI, which stands for the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and is a community-based nonprofit organization dedicated to providing support and resources for individuals and families affected by mental health issues. NAMI offers a range of services, including counseling, educational workshops, and support groups aimed at promoting mental health wellness and resilience. The organization also engages in advocacy efforts to raise awareness about mental health challenges and reduce stigma within the community. Through collaboration with local partners, NAMI San Mateo strives to create a supportive environment where individuals can access the help they need. This city, two years ago, we established yellow benches, two of them, in memory of Ryan's benches, and you can look them up online. And that is, that is to bring self-awareness to suicide prevention. A young adult that passed away in the state of Florida, the mom decided to put together a nonprofit to raise awareness. And we have one right out here on Mission Road. It's a yellow bench. Many of you probably have walked by. And we have another one in the corner of Linden and Pine in Old Town, District 5. These also have the Suicide Prevention Hotline number, 988, inscribed in English and Spanish. We never know when someone might need that extra sense of resource. So I want to read an excerpt into the record, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Coleman. "In recognition of September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, whereas September is known around the U.S. as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, when mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to promote suicide prevention awareness, in the 2024 theme is Love Over Loneliness. And whereas the city of South San Francisco will join the country, state, and county in honoring Suicide Prevention Month in September as National Suicide Prevention Week, September 8th through the 14th, and Worldwide Suicide Prevention Day, September 10th, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. We believe suicide is not inevitable for anyone, and by starting conversations, providing support, and directing help to those who need it, we can prevent suicides and save lives." It goes on and then finishes with, "Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of South San Francisco does hereby proclaim September as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And we are united in raising awareness that prevention is possible, treatment is effective, and people do recover." It is signed by the mayor and all members of this council. Present it to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Vice Mayor, you took all the words out of my mouth. So I just will, you know, reiterate that NAMI, which does stand for the National Alliance on Mental Illness, is the largest grassroots mental health nonprofit in the country and was actually founded right here in San Mateo County. We do offer compassionate support, education, and advocacy to hopefully enhance the quality of life for individuals and families who are affected by mental illness in our county. And I think that's really all of us. Whether you're impacted directly, like myself, I suffer from depression and severe anxiety, as well as one of my children, or you have a loved one, a colleague, we're all impacted in some way by mental health. And so all of our services are free to the community, and they are peer-led by folks who are on the recovery side of their mental health journey. Several of our facilitators and instructors at the San Mateo County affiliate are also suicide attempt survivors. And so they're really working every day to advocate in this space. For example, you know, requesting investigations into suicides in our county jails, asking for better diversion programs, affordable and safe housing, so that hopefully one day we could live in a stigma-free world where folks that are impacted by mental health challenges feel like they're able to thrive in society. So thank you for bringing awareness to suicide prevention and the important work that organizations like NAMI are doing. We do hope to bring our in-person programming here to South City soon so that we can ensure that residents of the north part of the county have a supportive place to start and continue their healing journeys. So thanks again.
Thank you. Item number four is a proclamation celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2024.
Thank you. The mayor has asked me to present these proclamations again. Along with these very important causes and notable awareness initiatives, we are recognizing this month, September, as Hispanic Heritage Month, where we honor Mexico and Central American countries of El Salvador, Honduras, Nicaragua, Guatemala, Costa Rica, and the South American countries of Brazil, Chile, commemorating their independence from Spain and Portugal, respectively. As a Salvadoran immigrant, it brings great privilege to honor our Latino heritage in South San Francisco with this proclamation. Tonight, I am delighted to have with us Alma Soto and Juanita Flores, no connection or affiliation, who are accepting these proclamations on behalf of our Latino community here in South San Francisco. Each of them are strong educational advocates and leaders in our community. They strongly believe that it will take all of us, todos, leaders from the city, school district, business community, nonprofit organizations, and parents to come together as one united movement. To share a little bit, Ms. Alma Soto immigrated to South San Francisco from Mexico in 1999 at the age of seven. She's now raising a family here with three children at Spruce Elementary and Parkway Heights Middle School, where she was PTA president for two years and is now PTA secretary. Ms. Soto also works as a family service specialist at Easy Early Education, formerly known as South San Francisco Head Start. Ms. Soto also serves our community as a board member of the nonprofit South San Francisco Educational Foundation and is VP of Conventions for the PTA 17th District. Alongside her, Ms. Juanita Flores has also been a longtime community member of South San Francisco, where she has worked at the South San Francisco Unified School District for 30 years. She is currently a community liaison for the school district, where she works with families for multiple schools, including Martin, Spruce, Los Ritos Elementary Schools. And basically, if you are a parent or you have connections of any of these schools or in the school district, you know her on a first-name basis. You know Juanita. Ms. Flores also serves on the Board of the South San Francisco Education Foundation, where she is the Vice President of Community Engagement. Ms. Flores is also President of the 17th District PTA, has three children and four grandchildren who have attended schools here in South San Francisco. Both Ms. Soto and Ms. Flores are proud Latinas, working towards building a future where all South San Francisco Unified School District students receive the education and resources that they need to achieve their highest potential. I am so pleased to join them in proclaiming this month as Hispanic Heritage Month, Mes de la Herencia Hispana. It brings a sense of pride and unity with the Latino community. It serves a time to come together, share stories, celebrate, share heritage, and build strong bonds between generations. Hispanic Heritage Month reinforces a sense of identity and belonging. With that, I'll read very quick excerpts of the following proclamations in English and Spanish into the record and then invite them to share a few words with us. Quickly, just to share that specifically, National Hispanic Heritage Month is a way to promote our history, rich and vibrant culture, and contributions of Hispanic Americans, specific those whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. We are very proud in this council that, as I say often in the community here in City Hall and in this city, we do speak Spanish, we do welcome our Spanish and Latino community, and also our immigrant community as well. So now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of South San Francisco does hereby recognize September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, a time to reflect on and celebrate the Hispanic-American community and how it has left an indelible mark on the U.S. culture and economy. Please join me in giving a round of applause to our two honorees here.
Thank you so much, Mayor Coleman, Vice Mayor Flores. Vice Mayor Flores, city council members, thank you for honoring, accepting. I'm honored to accept this as a city council proclamation of Hispanic Heritage Month. We are so proud Latinas from here, and we love our community, South San Francisco.
Thank you for also allowing South San Francisco Educational Foundation to have a booth at the upcoming Concert in the Park, September 21st. If anyone would like to learn more about our nonprofit organization and work we do to support our students and schools, please stop by and talk to us. We're also presenting at the September 26th School Board Meeting around 7:30. So you can tune in and learn more about us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five is a proclamation celebrating the 237th anniversary of the United States Constitution during the week of September 17th to the 23rd, 2024. After this item, we do have two public comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Valerie. So every year, in the week of September 17th to the 23rd, we observe the Constitution Week. And this is to bring attention to America's most important document, United States Constitution. This is aimed towards emphasizing our responsibilities as citizens to protect and defend the Constitution and inform the people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and the foundation of our way of life. So I will read into the record the proclamation. "Whereas September 17th, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of South San Francisco hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our community to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained." Signed by all members of the city council.
Thank you, Councilmember Nicholas. Good evening, Mayor Coleman, Vice Mayor Flores, city council members. I'm Valerie Summer, Library Director, and I'm here this evening accepting this Constitution Week proclamation on behalf of former city clerk Sylvia Payne and the local chapter of the DAR. During Constitution Week of September 17th to the 23rd, Sylvia and her team will be hosting a table here on the second floor of the Library Parks and Recreation Center and distributing free mini constitutions and related giveaways. DAR is also currently looking ahead and recognizing their two-year celebration of America 250. It's the anniversary of the Revelationary War. On July 4th, 2026, marks the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And I understand there are opportunities for displays. and I understand there are opportunities for displays during this time. And I don't want to leave the podium without saying something about this week's Band Books Week. September 22nd to 28th, we will be celebrating our freedom to read here at LPR in the library during that week. Thank you very much for this wonderful constitutional proclamation.
All right, thank you. Now that we've done all the proclamations, we should all take a photo together. So if the council could please join us at the center?
Mayor, sorry, we have two public speakers on item number five.
All right, go ahead.
We'll start with Tom Carney or Mike Harris, since he's on his way to the podium.
Good evening, James. I am a constitutionalist. My whole family is a military family. I'm disabled from Vietnam War, more disabled from the Gulf War. Dad, World War II Disabled Veteran. His dad, World War I Disabled Veteran. Mom's brother, 4F Merchant Marine Veteran. His son, Army Combat Veteran. His son, Navy Veteran, manages a war memorial building in San Francisco. I'm here to talk about the Constitution. My labor law case made the law books. I'll leave you a copy of this here. I have taken two cases to the D.C. Circuit. I've taken one case to the Supreme Court. I've taken two cases to the Court of Appeals for Veterans Claims. I've gone before in the Ninth Circuit myself, three-panel judge in 1988. I have fought injustice on the waterfront since 1985. I have paid a horrible price. I'm also a Kamala Harris crime victim, more lately, Steve Wachs's crime victim. I think I've said everything. Let me quote Admiral Arlie Burke. "I do not apologize for a minute of it."
Thank you. Moving on to Tom Carney.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to use one minute to speak on topic number five. I'm reserving my other two minutes for other comments. James, Council, you suppressed us for two years by taking away our three minutes. One minute, you smirked, you joked, you cajoled us, and disrespected us in every way possible. Tonight, you're given a proclamation? You don't believe in it. You wouldn't treat residents? I'm a 40-year resident. Mark? Three of you are immigrants, just like I. You come here for a better life? Respect where you live. Respect the people that allowed you in, just like me. This is America. If you wanted your home, if you want to make a living, respect our rights. Three minutes, and you suppressing us from speaking on any topic that's on the agenda is wrong. It's against the Brown Act, and you're violating it every time you do it. And you, James, are running for election, and you, Mark, stand up here and you blast us for coming before you to ask you about simple things, seeing you're standing on the street corner like homeless people begging you for a senior senator? And tonight, you're wrapping yourself in the flag? You need to check your ethics. I reserve two minutes.
If the council could join us in the center for a photo with all those who've received proclamations tonight. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next item.
Moving on to item number six is a presentation by Cal Water on their residential water rates restructure.
Thank you. So first off, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council for inviting us tonight to talk about this. And we're going to cover kind of who we are, how long we've been here, what we do here, what that takes, and then what that looks like in terms of our rate process and our infrastructure improvement plans. So just to verify, this is the clicker? It is. All right, thank you so much. So a brief bit about our history. So we formed in 1926, about 100 years ago. We serve areas all across California, as well as a few other states. More than 2 million customers throughout this state with over 500,000 connections, and that's more than 80 billion gallons annually. So to give you an idea of expanse, and that goes into kind of where we draw our expertise from and how we develop, how we run your water system. 6,500 miles of water main, the distance between Beijing and New York, is what we service and make sure works every day when you turn that tap on. So in South San Francisco, we've been part of this community since 1931. 68 local employees, combined 599 years of experience, 117 professional certificates. The population we serve is over 64,000 people with over 16,000 service connections. That equates to 160 miles of main here, six groundwater wells, 13 storage tanks, one groundwater treatment plant, and approximately 1,500 fire hydrants. And in South San Francisco, part of what we do is engage and be more than just your water purveyor, but we're interacting and members of your community. The local partnerships, South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, the Education Foundation Scholarship, we've always been a big part of, the annual business award sponsors, Taste of San Francisco, and then one of our workers who's here tonight is actually on that Board of Directors as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Ross Moylan, who is our district manager, to talk about the operations.
Thank you, Rob. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As Rob said, I'm the district manager over this service area, the Bay Shore District. The area that I want to talk to you about is the infrastructure improvement plan. It's a very important aspect of what we do. It's the plan that allows us to continue supporting, providing you safe, clean, reliable supply. It's also a big part of setting the rates that customers pay. And we want to talk a little bit about that. You're going to hear more from my colleague Kevin in a minute. But just looking at kind of in general, and I brought one of these flyers, we printed up some extra for tonight. You can also request a copy for anybody that's listening to this that would like one. It really just kind of breaks up where your dollars go, right? And so the big part of the dollars you see in percentage is really the water production side, the supply. 39% of your dollar goes towards that. 36%, which I'm going to talk more about tonight, is the capital improvement, the really the infrastructure, the underground piping, the reservoirs, the tanks that you see, is also a very big part of that, and of course includes the reliability and safety of that supply. You can see here kind of an example of a project that's the infrastructure. This is actually a mainline project here not too far in the Mayfair Village area. And you probably wonder whether there's a bunch of firemen, fire department firefighters standing there with us. And this is really an opportunity for us also to work jointly, as we mentioned, kind of from the community customer service standpoint in partnership. This was a training exercise regarding trench safety and rescue. And really, for the fire department to understand what we might have as far as equipment and personnel involved in trench, where they may be called to maybe rescue somebody. So this is a really good opportunity for us to work together. This is one of two-day exercises for a project that's actually ongoing right now. Having safe, clean, reliable drinking water is obviously key for all of us. I think we can all appreciate that. What goes behind that, and you see a gentleman here, he's looking at a water sample. We take routine samples daily throughout our systems. As you can see on this slide here, nearly half a million water quality tests in California per year. Just in this area alone, 12,684 tests we're taking for approximately 230 different substances that we look for to make sure that we know the levels, the absence, to make sure that that water is safe for all of you to consume and drink and utilize. We're proud to say it's among the safest water in the nation and is still able to deliver it for nearly a penny a gallon. We're very proactive with our planning, our maintenance on improvements to, again, make the community supply safe, just from a dollar standpoint. During the time of 2013 to 2022, our company as a whole invested over 1.5 billion statewide. In this area alone, during that same time, 145 million was spent. And we're proposing to invest another 141 million in this next cycle for improvements in infrastructure. Whoops, went too far there. The other ongoing maintenance and upgrades includes things like wildfire protection. It's not just working for the fire department, it's also making sure the infrastructure, the fire hydrants, wildfire hardening projects are in place to ensure that the fire department and agencies can protect the system if something was to happen, along with just making sure homeowners and businesses feel comfortable and are able to build and do things because we have adequate supply and fire protection in place. We also are actively addressing things like climate change, sustainability, and flood protection. We also want to prevent small problems from getting worse. So we've delayed some projects. We have to be careful when we do that. We don't want to kick the so-called can too far, because what often happens is those smaller problems become bigger problems and actually can be much more expensive for everybody in the long run. So we've established a very comprehensive program to ensure that we're doing the right projects at the right time and making sure that we're always looking at the cost impacts that people are going to receive from doing those things, as they obviously do cost money. Some of the other projects that we have currently going on in our recent application involves a storage tank redesign. Again, this is for having adequate emergency storage and supply based upon demands of our system. You've probably familiar with automated metering, particularly with maybe your PG&E. We're also looking at installing that in this application. We've had a lot of customers and communities ask us for that. It's never really completely penciled out before. It's finally reached a point where it really makes sense. It ties to conservation. You're going to hear a little bit about that in a second as well. So we're looking forward to having that, basically providing an additional tool for customers to monitor their usage, along with some valve and pump replacements throughout our system. And, you know, you see a large number here lastly on the bullet point, which is 81,000 feet of main replacement. That's approximately 15 miles of water main that we will be replacing. It's approximately 1% that we're replacing per year in our system, which is a pretty aggressive and important program to make sure that infrastructure is in place and reliable. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin McCusker to talk a little bit more about the rate-setting process. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. Thanks for having us. My name's Kevin McCusker. I'm a colleague of Ross and Rob with California Water Service. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the process of what we go through as a regulated utility. And it's important to note that that can be a difficult thing for people to conceptualize, and we do our best to try and be as transparent and as communicative as possible about this. And so it is important to note that what we're proposing does affect customer bills. And so let's take a look at what we're looking at. So as submitted, currently what we're looking for is, would be about 1.4 cents per day of an increase in 2026. This is a process that's just beginning. And during that time, we also tend to, we take it very seriously to promote our various bill assistance programs. We have a customer assistance program for people that's based on income qualifications. We have other things like penalty-free payment plans. This past year, we just instituted in partnership with a firm called Promise Pay. We always want our customers to call us if they're struggling to pay their bills, and we'll work out a payment plan. Sometimes people are uncomfortable having that conversation. By using Promise Pay, they can actually arrange that on a phone and make micro-payments and stay current with their bill. In addition, we offer what we think is the most robust conservation program in the state. We have rebates for things like toilets, washers, sprinkler controllers, things like that. If anybody is watching or paying attention, you go to calwater.com/conservation, you'll find this information. I cannot stress this enough. If you want to buy a water-efficient device, go to the site first, look up the various apparatus that qualify for the rebate before you put out money hoping to get a rebate on the other side, because unfortunately, that does happen. People buy the wrong device, try to apply for the rebate, and we hate for that to happen. Let's take a look at our, we just recently went through a delayed decision from the PUC, so I wanted to take a look at what the bill and the tier structure used to look like versus what it looks like currently. So the service charge there is the fixed monthly charge that you pay. It's kind of like a thing that you can conceive of as a readiness-to-serv charge. And then the big change that we've instituted is a more progressive rate structure, and I want to get into kind of the theory behind this very briefly. I know, I know time is short. Previously, we had three tiers. What we've redesigned this to be is, the state of California considers six units to be what's considered health and safety usage in the household. So what we've tried to do is try to make those first six units into the household as affordable as possible. So we've greatly reduced that Tier 1. Then Tier 2 now becomes kind of the prime or default tier. And then unfortunately, in order to get more conservation and more water efficiency, we've had to start adopting some price signals to try and drive people down the consumptive ladder. The typical median usage in the Bay Shore District is six CCFs. But obviously, there is some variability there. People tend to use more water in the summer than they do during the, excuse me, during the winter. But when you average it out over the course of the year, the typical usage is six CCFs here. It's important to note that we do not set our own rates, and I want to talk a little bit very briefly about this process. We submit a proposal, including what we think is the necessary revenue and how those, that should be applied across customer bills to collect that revenue to the California Public Utilities Commission. In addition, there is another independent office within the PUC called the California Public Advocates Office. Their entire job is to vet and challenge everything we propose. In addition, other entities can get involved as well. And the public advocate's mission is, as quoted up there, is to try and find the lowest possible possible cost of service that is still consistent with safety and reliability. And in the long run, although we might come at this issue from different perspectives, that's our goal, too. We want, we want safe water. We want the service to be reliable, but we want that and we want it to be as affordable as possible. But it is, safety and reliability has to be balanced in there. Safe, that water that is unsafe to drink is not affordable at any price. So I wanted to just highlight a couple of things here, that there are multiple ways for people to contact us. We have 24/7 support, something people don't always consider. We're always available. We can have people at their homes if if an issue comes up. And if people want to learn more about the IIP itself, our Infrastructure Improvement Plan, they can go to calwater.com/iip. I also want to give another plug to calwater.com/conservation. The conservation programs are funded through customer bills, and so if you have the means and the ability to take advantage of it, you should. It does two things. It makes you a good steward of a precious limited resource, and it helps you control your water bill. And I believe that's it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question. I know, thank you, first of all, for the presentation for the team as well. The infrastructure project that you've done here in South City, I read, because I know it's, it also covers District Five, that I represent, the Mayfair Village, that you were replacing 18 existing fire hydrants, and also you added two more in. Is that correct? Was that, was that provided and concluded?
Yes, that's correct. I have to defer to the operations guys on that.
Great. Just wanted to make sure that the community know that they're also in collaboration with our our fire department in putting that forward.
Absolutely. We work very closely with fire departments. In fact, we have a firefighter grant program, and I believe South San Francisco was a recipient a few years ago of one of those grants. And that just opened last week, so the application period is open right now.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, October, October 5th, I think, is when we're going to close.
So I do have one question. I remember, you know, a resident had reached out to to me and the council, I believe, a couple of years back. But basically, there's a rebate program for rainwater barrels. And that rebate program covered many cities in San Antonio County, but was left, but South San Francisco was left out of that program.
Yes, we don't, we do not have a rain barrel program as part of our conservation program. We, mostly because of what we're looking to do is kind of provide more kind of cost-effective and more consistently efficient ways to do that. Rain barrels are great, and people should use them if they so choose. It does create standing water that can have other public health effects, so it's not something we support. But it is a, for those people who want to make, take access of it, we highly encourage it, whether it be shower buckets, rain barrels, anything like that.
Right, but my point was, I believe Cal Water did provide this rebate for other cities, but it was just not extended to South San Francisco, if I remember correctly.
I do not believe that's the case, but I will double check. I've been with Cal Water since 2015, going back to the big drought in 2015 is when I came on board. And during my tenure, rain barrels have been not part of the portfolio. But we do tend to look at household appliances, irrigation controllers, those are the things that we tend to focus on. Turf replacement, too.
All right, thank you.
I think it's great public service that you have this, but I think a lot of people don't know about the resources that you were talking about. Would you be able to have a table, a resource table perhaps at our city concert in the park, right? Is it still, is it too late?
Well, I can't speak for the Conservation Department. If we can't hit that timeline, we'd love to come to another event and and offer some things. Now that we're wrapping up kind of the summer, maybe that's sometimes the best time for people to consider making changes in their, in their household consumption.
Yeah, and something like, for example, what you have said, that before we buy something, we have to look it up and get those rebates. I think those are.
I really can't stress that enough. It breaks my heart when people tell me that they went out with the best of intentions and then found out afterwards that the device didn't qualify. When you go on there, it's calwater.com/conservation. It'll ask you to pick your district. South San Francisco is part of our Bay Shore District. Choose that, then you choose residential, and then it'll give you a whole list of all the rebates with PDFs of all the qualified products.
Or perhaps a link in our website, right, for, should they need something from Cal Water?
Certainly, we could probably put a article in our weekly Friday newsletter with a link, which reaches about 20,000 people, so that would be.
We would love that.
I had a question for the gentleman. So 6,500 miles, you know, your entire system you're responsible for.
For California, yeah.
Yeah, 81,000 feet, I guess in the Bay Shore District?
That is the.
Main replacement?
Replacement, yeah. That is for the entire Bay Shore District, which roughly comes out between around one-third of that would be here?
Yeah. Sorry, leaving it all for Kevin. Yeah, and that's over a three-year period of time, the 81,000 feet. And as was stated, approximately a third. We're really looking at the infrastructure as a whole for the Bay Shore District, but that's kind of a rough estimate. And we can give you particular streets that we're looking at.
Well, you mentioned 1% of the system annually, so I did some rough math here, and it would take 100 years to redo the system.
That's exactly right, yes.
And is that enough, given the problem that we recently experienced with your system down on Airport Boulevard near Costco and the water quality plant, where there's back-to-back major breaks that took some time to repair? Are you moving fast enough?
Well, we're, we're actually increasing. So previously, we are three-quarters of a percent, and we kind of look at that same question you're asking, are we doing enough? We felt we needed to do more, and as I mentioned in the presentation, we really are trying to balance costs. We want to make sure we're, we don't put something off too long and it creates a bigger problem, because we've obviously seen that happen before, and I think we probably can all relate to that. And we feel like we're doing a good job with our main replacement program. Upping it an additional quarter percent is significant. It is costly, and we're hoping that we get the approval through the process. But we do feel it's, it's, it's recognized as a good percentage from folks like the American Water Works Association, who provides a lot of guidance for all of us in water utilities to to kind of take a look at. So we do feel much better about it, and we hope we get the approval to do that work.
And and your approval, you mentioned in the presentation that your approval comes from a panel of experts. Aren't you controlled by the PUC?
They are regulators, yes.
Okay, and who provides the panel of experts? The PUC or you?
Well, we have our experts on our team with regards.
For the rate, though, to justify the rate increase.
Yes.
I can talk a little bit to that.
So the, one of the best ways to conceptualize is, is it's almost like an 18-month civil trial. We present our proposal. Their experts counter our proposal and say that's too much.
Their experts being the PUC?
The, the public advocates. The California Public Advocates is an independent office within the PUC. So they are our, our constant opposition to represent the ratepayers. And so then the two sides make that presentation and then goes back and forth. Then an administrative law judge makes a proposed decision, which then goes to the five-member commission. They can approve that, or they could even alter and and propose an alternate decision. I think one of the things to clarify, too, is the process starts with what is the required revenue to operate the system? What's the total amount we need to operate the system? So it works a little different than most businesses, because there is no, what will, what kind of margin will the customers bear? It is, this is the money that it takes to operate the system efficiently, safely, and reliably. And then from there, you say, okay, now how much water do we think we're going to sell? And how many customers does that divide across? And that's how you get to the price.
And then with that, is there a, maybe a guaranteed rate of return for your operation?
There's an approved rate of return. It's not guaranteed, though.
What is the approved rate, roughly?
I have it right here. Give me one second. It's about nine and a half, I believe.
Okay. And then my last question, when we, we were looking at the tiered rates.
Sorry, 6.8.
Excuse me?
6.8.
Okay, that's, that's better than nine and a half for, from the ratepayers standpoint. When we were talking about the tiered system, and I know, I'm not sure if it was with water or with some other utility, but aren't the tiered systems kind of under fire in the legal world?
There has been some combat around that for entities that are subject to Prop 218. So under Prop 218, you have to tie your, you know, your costs to the, the revenue need, right? A one-for-one. So there was a case in San Juan Capistrano, probably about, it's got to be close to nine, eight years ago, where they had some rates that were, and openly saying that their rates were only to promote conservation. That was challenged by a taxpayer organization and was overturned based on Prop 218. However, the SFPUC, they have done kind of more along the lines of what we do. They incorporate conservation, but also the price effect of higher volume. And then they also have tiered rates that have, I believe, have faced and succeeded against legal challenge. And with regard to conservation and the cost effectiveness, why it's a good process even in the rate setting, we recently did a study about the effect, the price effect of conservation. Because from our perspective, the, the most affordable water is not to develop new sources. That is cost-intensive. It's to take the existing water supply and make it go further. And that study covered a 10-year horizon. South San Francisco was one of the specific districts that we modeled out, and that showed a 15% cost savings over a 10-year horizon by promoting conservation.
And you know, at the time of drought and such, this has created a lot of angst in the community of ratepayers when you're doing everything you can to save water, and yet it costs more per gallon, even though it's just a penny. I guess that's pretty darn good. Back to the, back to the, the rates, though, the tiered rates. So you know, if you're, if you're a, a single-family home and you're using six units, then you should get the best rate. If you're using 25 units, you or more, you would get the highest rate.
Yes.
But if, if you are living in multifamily housing and collectively, six of you or four of you are using six units of water, which would be comparable to single-family homes, your rate is much higher.
Right, well, multifamily rate is set differently.
Yeah.
So it really has to do whether or not each of those units is sub-metered as an individual customer, or whether it's a multifamily residential connection.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of condominiums that are, are not individual meters, 112-unit buildings, even six-unit apartment houses in the, in the downtown area. And so what actually happens by, by having that higher rate come in every month, it gets passed on to the people that live there. So because I rent a home in a multifamily apartment, I pay more for my water than the single-family home. You don't have to comment on that, I just have a problem with it.
Well, and, yeah, I can't, there's little I can comment on there. The, the rate, I didn't bring the multifamily rate, but the, that rate then, under that scenario, would go to, the bill would go to the landlord. And then we can't control how the landlord incorporates that utility charge into the, the rent.
We can imagine what happens. I think it's.
That, that part we, we cannot control. But we are doing what we can. We take affordability very seriously, and we are doing what we can to try and make that, that first tier of water, what's a, you know, the water you need to live as affordable as possible, as opposed to the water you choose to use as part of your lifestyle. And that's really the approach that we're trying to take.
Yeah, this has been helpful. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, just, just a brief follow-up on my, my previous comments. I was mixing up my water agency. Is Basca that, that provided that?
Okay, yeah, we, we have a member on the board. We participate with Basca. We just don't have an individualized rebate program for that.
All right, sorry for mix-up, but thank you.
No, no, problem.
Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to item number seven is a presentation from Caltrain on electrification and more.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Coleman, Vice Mayor Flores, council members. My name is Brent Tejada. I'm the External Affairs Manager for the Caltrain Electrification Project. Very happy and appreciate you having us tonight. So some quick Caltrain context. We own 77, or 51 miles of track, but we do serve 77 miles of track end-to-end from San Francisco down to Gilroy. We own the tracks from San Francisco to San Jose, but we do not own the tracks south of Tamian Station in San Jose to Gilroy. That's owned by Union Pacific, but we do operate on that track. We do serve 31 stations. We do still have a bidirectional, bidirectional commute, meaning that we do see folks coming both north and southbound in the morning and the evening commutes. We have 41 at-grade crossings, two of which are here, one or two are which are here in South San Francisco. And we do have a very bright future in front of us with Caltrain Electrification, but we are facing some challenges with our finances in terms of, since the pandemic, we've seen a huge drop-off in our ridership. That is coming back as more people get on the trains, especially for that non-commute and eve, event time. But we are seeing a 70, 77 annual, $77 million annual deficit in our near future. To help combat that deficit, we have a lot of different initiatives that are going on right now. We have an equity growth and recovery policy that's really focused on diversifying our ridership to make sure that we don't have that non, that traditional commute rider there today, but hoping to get more folks on the train during evenings, midday, and on the weekends. We have a revised schedule, which have the most Caltrain service ever, and I'll go into that in more moment. Regional coordination with our partners here with Samtrans, the Bay Pass, which is an MTC pilot program, and Clipper Start, city partnerships and toolkits, which I'll talk about later in this presentation as well. A Pass Forward program, which helps donate our Go Passes, which are unlimited rides to local nonprofits or low-income housing groups. Customer experience, we're really proud to say that September 1st, we started a $1 youth pass and a $2 unlimited day pass. So anybody under, 18 and under, can ride Caltrain any direction and all day for a dollar. So we're really hoping that our next generation of students and younger folks can get on board, see how great Caltrain is as an experience, and continue to ride in the future. We are, a transformational moment for us. Caltrain started in, the railroad started here in the Bay Area in 1864 with steam engines. We've had diesel since the 1950s and are really looking forward to our new electric trains coming to full service next Saturday, September 21st. So some of the milestones, looking back on the project, we have installed over 3,000 foundations, 200, 2,500 poles, 10 traction-power facilities, one of which is here in South San Francisco Station, 2 and 1/2 million feet of wire. We upgraded our signal systems across the corridor. We have 12 train sets currently on property, two more coming next month. And then we've worked with the first responders, firefighters, EMS, EMT along the corridor, training them as well about the new system. These new trains are in service now. If you've been on our corridor, they are actually running. We have about 75% of our service today being run by our electric trains. And on September 21st, we'll have 100% electric service between San Francisco and San Jose. We had some great tours out there the last year, San Jose, San Francisco, and San Carlos. Over 12,000 people came out to see them. The trains were stationary, weren't moving at that time, and they were great to see, but it really is a different experience to feel how much smoother, quieter these trains are in service. For the benefits of the project and the service overall, the huge benefits are getting there faster. These trains are electric, like an electric vehicle, can stop and start more quickly than our older diesel trains. So that express train from San Francisco to San Jose will get to, will make that trip under an hour. It'll actually make more stops than it does today, 11 stops along stations, including South San Francisco here. Quicker local service, so that train that makes all the stops is 23 minutes quicker. And then those traveling from South Santa Clara County to San Francisco can save up to 20 minutes. Will provide 20% more train service overall, even though we're providing the same amount of trains per day. That stop and starting more quickly of the trains can provide that additional service. 26% more service to our equity priority stations. And then really excited about the half-hourly weekend and off-peak service. So currently, our weekend service is hourly, but starting on September 21st and beyond, it'll be half-hourly. So more connections being made for that. These trains, as I mentioned, are a first-class experience for everyone. They have free, quick Wi-Fi onboard, a smoother, quieter experience, power outlets at every seat to make sure you stay connected and powered, digital trip information onboard to make sure you know where you're going and getting on the right train. And there's a one bathroom per car as well. Not to mention all the clean and green benefits of these sustainable energy. We've worked with Peninsula Clean Energy and San Jose Energy, Clean Energy in the South to provide 100% renewable clean energy for these new electric trains. Here's a quick look at what South San Francisco can see and expect in terms of additional service. So currently, on the weekday, there's a 60 trains per weekday in both directions, so it's probably about 30, 30. But South San Francisco, knowing the promise that this station, the new station serves the straight connection to downtown, all the businesses and developments built in the South San Francisco area, it will get every train that's. the South San Francisco area, it will get every train that's provided by Caltrain. That's 104 trains per day. And that's a 75% increase in service. And as I mentioned, on the weekends, that stops goes from one hour, one per hour to two per hour. We have service fact sheets. If anybody's watching online, you can go to caltrain.com/servicebenefits. You can again see how much service South San Francisco will be provided, the stopping patterns. So again, South San Francisco will go get every train, so all the stopping patterns, including the expresses, and see how much quicker your trip will be. So down to San Jose, it'll be about 19 minutes quicker for that express train. We've done a lot of community outreach and happy to come to any schools, tabling as, as needed or as desired for South San Francisco. So we've done these mailers to all of our corridors, the, all of the, about a half-mile from the corridor, we've done these mailers, been to tablings at schools, other organizations to let folks know about the safety, safety, yeah, just about the safety, staying safe around the new electric wires and the new electric trains. And as was mentioned earlier, we have a great launch party that's starting on, that'll be on September 21st and 22nd. So sorry about that date, it's Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. here at the Carol Matamoto Plaza. Thanks to the city staff for helping organize that event. And after that event, we encourage you to go to Palo Alto Station from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. in, on Saturday, or San Mateo Station on Sunday from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. We'll have a large block party at those stations. So thanks again for South San Francisco staff for helping coordinate and organize that Carol Matamoto dedication in the morning. And then we'll have free Caltrain rides throughout that weekend as well, as well as free parking. So that's on September 21st is when we'll see the faster, more frequent schedule, as well as a half-hourly weekend service. We know that cities are vital partners for us in getting our ridership back. So really looking forward to working with the cities more on the, on reducing traffic, on supporting downtown recovery, and incentivizing workers to return to office, and of course, reducing greenhouse gas emissions. To do that, we have a toolkit, which is at caltrain.com/citypartnerships. And these are some of the tools that we've worked with other cities as well. Some cities have signed up for city worker Go Passes, which are Go Passes for all of their employees to use Caltrain and get to, unlimited passes for Caltrain, working with and sharing best practices about, around transportation demand management, development agreements, local ordinances, parking management, all these things that you all know as city staff and city members, but just an opportunity to share what other cities are learning as best, best practices. I think that was my last slide. Happy to answer any questions and really look forward to seeing you all on September 21st and 22nd.
Well, we've, we've watched it, you know, over the years, and it's just really remarkable what you have been able, the fact that you're delivering it this month. I was wondering if there's any way the Caltrain team could maybe pivot and take over the high-speed rail to Los Angeles. It might get done, right?
No comment on that. We look forward to working with our partners on that one, yes. And we really appreciate the city. It's been a, we have 21 cities that we help run through, and South San Francisco has been a great partner in making this a reality, as well as a beautiful new station, which new trains rolling into that station is going to be a great benefit for everybody.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I used Caltrain for many years when I was working at Stanford. And last August 11th, I went to a Giants game, and I really enjoyed the electric train. Thank you.
Oh, good. Great. Glad, thank you.
I guess I'll finish off. It's incredible to see all the great work that, that Caltrain has been doing, and just the service increases are going to definitely increase ridership up and down the entire county. So thank you so much for the, the work that you're doing.
Great. Thank you all so much.
Go ahead.
On PBS, there's a program called The Daylight. It's about the steam trains that used to go from here all the way to LA, and then they got bigger and bigger. My mom used to ride that with her, her family, because my dad, her father worked for Railway Express. It's an hour program on PBS. You should be able to find it on the web. These trains were 5,000 horsepower steam trains, and that's how we got along. And then General Motors and General Firestone, the tire companies, put an end to this, you know, all, all over the country. Those trains, to make up time with 5,000 horsepower, they do like 120 miles an hour. This is a very, very interesting program. I thought maybe you might be interested in it. Thanks.
Moving on to council comments request.
All right. Who would like to begin? Go ahead.
I can go. Myself, the mayor, and the vice mayor, we attended a great kind of groundbreaking ceremony for the North County Wellness Center that was last week. And it's a 77,000 square foot new health center that's right, right next to the, this North County Superior Court building. And it's going to expand the new, expand the San Mateo County Health System's ability to deliver more patient care for residents of North San Mateo County. The Wellness Center is going to house the medical clinic, the Human Services Agency, Sally Allen Office for the District Attorney's Office, and the Treasurer and Tax Collector. So that, I thought that was kind of interesting that they mentioned that. But really, it's the focus on the new healthcare services. And as, as the speaker so eloquently said earlier from NAMI about how mental health is really important, we're going to have this new center that's going to be able to provide those services. And I think that's really great. And I just want to thank the mayor for, for kind of, for his remarks and for staff and the county staff for putting together. I can't, I can't wait to kind of see that. And then the mayor, I believe the vice mayor, and Councilmember Nicholas, we were at the tree lighting ceremony for Juliana Penney. For those who don't know, Juliana was a young South San Francisco resident who passed away because of a child neuroblastoma. And her family keeps her memory alive by, if you look outside that window, there is a tree that's lit. And, and so that's in memory really for her and for all of the kids. And as her father says, you know, "One day we'll find a cure." And so it's really great that we continue to do that. And coming to a more serious note, there's been kind of a, it's kind of an interesting day at Westboro. Phone calls with Chief Sampson and I who are having. There was a major power outage in, up in Westboro. And at the same time, there was a PG&E slight explosion up in Westboro where, I'm forgetting the name, Sky, what is it called again?
Vault.
The vault, where it's basically a cover for PG&E, and it exploded. And there was a plume of flames that came up. We were really, really lucky. And no one was hurt or killed. And this is, and it's, and it's very sensitive to me because just recently was the anniversary of the San Bruno Pipeline. And I have a friend who I became very close to who lost family members in San Bruno. So I wanted to thank our first responders, I want to thank our police, our fire, for acting so quickly up there in terms of putting that fire out. And maybe Chief Sampson, if he can come up here and just give us an update in terms of the power outages and kind of what happened up there. And then I'm going to go to Sky for some questions.
Yep. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Matt Sampson, your fire chief. Just after 3 o'clock this afternoon, our crews did respond to Galway Drive in the Westboro neighborhood on a reported explosion with an associated fire. And our crews found a PG&E underground vault that did have an act of fire burning in it. And they were able to quickly warn the residents in the neighborhood and then actually move their vehicles for them so they wouldn't be impinged by flames from their driveway. And we did get very fortunate. Nobody did get hurt, and we actually didn't witness any property damage either.
Yeah.
And we stood by and waited. Our crews had to wait to engage the fire because we weren't sure if the electrical lines were still live. And once they were de-energized, we were able to quickly extinguish the fire and mitigate the incident. PG&E did respond, and they did work to start restoring power. I believe almost all of Westboro neighborhood does have power now, but at some point today with some other power issues, a power line came down near Shannon, and there's almost 8,000 residents or customers, excuse me, without power.
And so we're still monitoring in terms of when the power is going to come back. And so I did speak to PG&E, and you know, they give you an estimated time for when the power comes back. But we all know when the, we experience the power outages, sometimes that time doesn't quite work out. And so let's, let's continue to monitor that in terms of the time. I did speak to a lot of the residents that were there, and you know, they were scared that it happened. And so, but they do thank the police and fire. I think, I thank the firefighters that were there, our first response were there, and I talked to the residents. And so this, NAMI, just pivot to Sky. So Sky, if we find out that there were, that this was caused by faulty devices by PG&E, can we take action against them in terms of what happened?
Since, since at this point, there doesn't appear that there were any injuries or property damage, there wouldn't be any, wouldn't necessarily be any basis for a claim directly against PG&E, but we could certainly interface with them to try to gather more information about the cause of the incident, similar facilities that are in the area and with, and in other places in South San Francisco's jurisdiction, and to find out what they're doing to take proactive measures to ensure that a similar incident doesn't occur someplace else in the city.
Because one of the things they ask is like, they want to know what happened. And I think we all want to know what happened. And so I think one of the things we need to do is once we find out what happened in terms of a report or an investigation in terms of by PG&E, that that report should be given to the residents so that they're aware of what happened and what's going to be done to ensure that this doesn't happen again.
I, I think to your point, it's, it's important to not just obtain from them a, a report that can be made public about what happened in this particular instance, but also, are is there a risk of a similar incident occurring someplace else in the city? And what, if anything, are they doing and can they do to, to take measures to prevent it from happening again?
Absolutely. I think one of the things we need to do is they have to do an assessment of all the infrastructure here in South San Francisco to make sure that it, they've, it's up to date. Because I was there. I was on the ground. I saw, I saw the video of the fire. I was all the way in Oakland Airport, and I, and I got the phone call, and I ran over, when I ran, I drove over here. And, and I was scared because I remember what happened in San Bruno. So we got really lucky here. So I want to make sure we stay on top of this and that we connect with PG&E to find out what happened, because I had a conversation with them again multiple times today about what is happening, and I was not very happy in terms of what was going on. So let's continue to have the conversation and find out what happened, and I was rectified to make sure this does not happen again. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Can I ask, was it the gas system of PG&E, or was it the electrical system?
So the underground vault is described with their service technician was all electrical. And so it was a splitting system, so a power line was feeding two different splits, like a Y, and the, the actual node or the switch was what failed.
Congratulations to the library staff who hosted the end-of-summer event last August 31st. You should see our park and playground teeming with young kids and young families. It was so beautiful to see that they have face painting and all other activities, and there were also opportunities to blow bubbles. I really enjoy that much. And so I have never seen so much joy on the kids and their parents. Thank you also to one of our firefighters, Joey, who did firefighter story. And then he also brought along with him the fire truck. And so all of the kids really had a great fun climbing into the fire truck and enjoying the, the bells and whistles of that fire truck. I just have two requests. I know that Tony has said that whatever the issue is about the public comments audio has been resolved, but maybe we can have someone periodically check if our audio is still okay and confirm that that is fixed. And also on the issues about the sweeping after the road pavement, I know that there is already a response and we're looking into it, but perhaps we have to inform the other people because it wasn't just one or two who had asked about it. So maybe we can look into that after we have fully investigated the reasons. And I would like to request this meeting to be adjourned in, in memory of Francisco Frank Viera, who was originally appointed to the Design Review Board in 2015 and had previously served on the Historical Preservation Committee for 12 years. He often got new residential projects to conform to green building standards, solar readiness, and ensure the home are maintained, have, have maintained their historic elements. So if you have seen a lot of this good works, it's because of Frank, who passed away recently. And before his retirement, Frank worked for 40 years as a general contractor specializing in historic restoration. And I would also like to request to observe a moment of silence for the 2,977 people killed in the Al Qaeda terror, terror attacks 23 years ago. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor? Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Today is September the 11th, and it's, it's amazing. It's been 23 years for those of us that lived through it. It does seem like yesterday. We all remember where we were and how we were affected. Greatest terrorist attack on America, greatest attack on American soil since the British came back in 1812. So I wanted to thank, there's a woman in the audience who's perpetually in the audience, and today she did something relatively simple, but it made me very happy because in South San Francisco, the flags were flying at half-staff because this is Patriots' Day. It's a day of remembrance, it's a day of service for some people. So Marie Patea is the one that's in charge of so much, and she never fails us. Our flags were at half-staff. There are other agencies in South San Francisco? I'll mention one, not the other. The County of San Mateo was flying at full staff. They also fly the POW MIA flag in the wrong place. I don't know who can talk to the county, but I don't, I don't have a lot of friends down there, so maybe, especially after tonight. But anyway, Marie, thank you, because those little things are so very important. And it is a day of service. All that I was aware of locally at, and we should know, at Golden Gate National Cemetery, there were a few dozen volunteers that came on the property today to scrub stones and and just do general cleanup. And it's something that maybe we can, I found out today that it was occurring, and maybe it's something that we could dial into as a community. It's, it's San Bruno, but it's a lot of, a lot of the people that you see on our memorials at Orange Park were actually buried right there at Golden Gate National, so. Yesterday, Tuesday evening, I was at the Bass Cultural Center with the Sister City Committee, and they wanted to put the word out, they're planning a trip. They're not sure where, but they know that they're going to travel sometime this time next year. And it looks like it's between Lucca, Italy, and Kishiwata, Japan. Kishiwata is my favorite place of the two this time because there's an international conference of sister cities in Japan, and also there's an expo that's occurring right in Osaka, an expo that will run from April to October. So there's a lot of flexibility there. So if you're interested in traveling with us, and we, we travel cheap, that's the whole point, right? There can only be 20 of us because of transportation and such. So if you'd like to go with us, it's $15 to join the committees, and you'll receive immediate savings by signing up for the trip with us. And then in the afternoon, yesterday afternoon, I attended my first Coleman Creek Citizens' Advisory Committee. Sharon Reynolds prevailed upon me. We had an opening there. It had been vacant for a few meetings, and it is important that we be part of that committee. And I actually, I was reluctant, you know, because I kind of see myself semi-retired. But I was glad I went. And there's a lot of interesting projects that are happening with this one shoreline who's kind of taken over the maintenance of the creek. But what I, what I most enjoyed about the meeting was watching our very own City Engineer Director of Public Work, Yunjun Kim, interfacing with the powers that be with the county. And, you know, they can be a handful sometimes, but let me tell my colleagues and the city that when it comes to those meetings, we are well-represented. They have a whole different language. I don't know what they're talking about half the time, but Yunjun does, and thank God he's there advocating for us. One of the interesting projects that may come up in near time is a large trash capture device. So at Orange Park, we have a trash capture device and a water cleaning. But this would be a little bit north of that, which would get the large items, I guess, out, which would ultimately better, be better for the maintenance of our system in the park. So I'm going to ask my So I'm going to ask my current hero, Yunjun Kim, when that's available for a presentation, I'd like the council and the community to know what's planned because we're doing everything we can to keep that creek as clean as possible. And we have to do more, and ultimately, it keeps the bay a little more pristine. So. And then a week ago, Tuesday, Eddie Flores, the Vice Mayor, and I were with the couple of school Board of Trustees members, it's our liaison committee. And I just wanted to report that there were some residents from the First District who are very dialed into the need for a park in Sunshine Gardens School, the Sunshine Gardens Park Coalition. And they came and made comments. And I can't tell you how proud I was to be a representative for those people. You know, 201, the presentations were just incredibly professional, incredibly respectful, no repetition. It was just well organized, well planned. There were six of them. I need to mention them because I just thought that they, they did the best of citizen input with public comment. So special nod to Jerry Travens, Janet Shapiro, Lupe and Don Ibarra, Michael Yoshida, and the Chairs of the Committee, Davy Lynn Perez and Antonio Roscoe. The Superintendent remarked about the same thing. She was so impressed by them. And that's so very important because this really was the first time, I listened closely, this was the first time, Eddie, you'll verify this, where the Superintendent said that her team would look at this in relation to the whole project that's going to be going on Sunshine Gardens School. That is a big movement, and I can't thank those people enough for the way they presented. And Eddie, thank you. The Vice Mayor put an item on there. We meet at 2:30 in the afternoon. And these six people, some are retired, some are still working. It's really difficult for people to be at a government meeting at 2:30 in the afternoon. You almost think it's designed that maybe they don't want you there. So Eddie brought up, maybe we should have evening meetings, and I think it was generally accepted, we can't do it right away. But for the new year, there'll be evening meetings where you can go to these liaison committees to learn more about the interface between the school district and the city. And there's just a lot of great things happening. It's not just this park thing, but maybe I'll let the Vice Mayor remark on those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just to continue on that conversation, I really want to give you kudos for championing. I truly believe that there will be a park in the First District in South San Francisco for not only members and residents of Sunshine Gardens neighborhood, but for all residents to be able to enjoy. And I really want to thank you for spearheading that conversation and bringing it back on the agenda, despite, you know, whatever has happened over the course of the years. Many residents definitely included their strong comments on the interest of that. And I also want to acknowledge and continuously thank the partnership with the South San Francisco Unified School District and the Superintendent, Dr. Moore, for continuous having dialogue, not just on this topic, but throughout other topics, including our after-school programs, our service agreements with our facilities, et cetera, with parks and recreation, and other new initiatives that we're looking to partner on for the benefit of not just our students, but our community as a whole. So thank you, Mark, for mentioning on that. Just two events that I want to invite the community, even though they're highlighted for a particular community, I would say heritage, everyone, and I mean everyone, underscoring is invited. Saturday, I want to invite all of our community this Saturday, beginning at 5:00 p.m. This year, we are partnering with Sociedad Mutualista Mexicana, better known as Morelos Hall. At 5:00 p.m., this is a free event for the entire community. It's located at 209 Miller Avenue. Come join us, the Mayor, myself, and others, for the Grito de Independencia, the Independence Yell, coronation of Mid-South City. They do have a tradition of a contest there. Ballet Folklorico, Danzas Teca, Mariachi, City Proclamation, and some good Latino and Mexican refreshments. Again, everyone is welcome. It's a free event commemorating Hispanic Heritage Month and our community as a whole. It was mentioned earlier, it's a pleasure to invite not just seniors, everyone is invited. I've been getting a lot of text message and emails, is it just only for seniors? It's geared towards seniors, but we're welcoming everyone. We're not going to turn anyone away. It's a free event. Anyone interested to come together to tackle a very pressing issue, which in our digital age, which is online scams, and particularly targeting elder adults. I have many relatives, including neighbors and whatnot, that you get that UPS text message that your package is there to click on the link, or it's arriving, or a delivery is happening. You don't know if it's true. You don't know if to even check it, right? Or sometimes the phishing, they call it phishing scams on websites. So this Friday at 11:30 a.m. at the Rotary Terrace Community Room in District 5, I'm holding the Scam Stopper Seminar. We will be joined by Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, CISA, to help us, all of us, learn how to protect ourselves from fraud. You know, as technology advances, we all have to keep up with it, and currently, AI technology as well. Some of the stats that really drove myself and Mayor Coleman to put this together is scams targeting individuals aged 60 and older cost over $3.4 billion in losses just last year in 2023, an increase of approximately 11% from the year prior. Tech support scams as well were the most widely reported kind of elder fraud in 2023. Investment scams also were the costliest kind of elder fraud in 2023. So please join if you can, 11:30 to 1:30 p.m. this Friday. And if you're not able to come, we're doing kind of a east of the city and west of the city. You can join Mayor Coleman on September 19th at Burry-Burry, multipurpose room. It will be the same seminar, so you don't have to attend both. But everyone is welcome. Just want to make sure that the community hears about this. And I think it's also going out, or it has been going out, on the Mayor's weekly announcements as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, I will be brief. So over the past couple of weeks, I've attended quite a few great events, the first being the Bike Summit, which was hosted right here in this building. Over 300 advocates for active transportation and transit safety were here for their annual Bike Summit. And they chose this new building because, and they chose South San Francisco because of a lot of the great work that we are doing for active transportation, for protected bike lanes. And just making sure that when we are designing our roads and infrastructure, that we're making it safe for everyone, whether you're in the car, on a bike, or you're walking. So I was proud to attend that. And after, I literally walked across the street to the groundbreaking for the Health Center, which I know our Councilmember, Mark Nicholas, touched on. It was a great groundbreaking event. It is going to be a building that, you know, we're really creating a community here, right? We have the Library and Parks Racine Center here. We have the park right out there, the Police Department just down the street. We're going to get many homes and some businesses. And right across the street from there, you're going to have a new Health Center that is going to provide many, many resources and services from primary care to dental care to mental health care that will serve the South San Francisco community well. So in line with that, I do want to talk a little bit about the county, right? The county, of course, building that Health Center, but the county also doing a lot when it comes to addressing homelessness. Our County Executive, Mike Callagie, recently shared the first article of a series on our homeless population in San Mateo County. The first article focuses on unhoused seniors at the county's Navigation Center. Unhoused seniors in San Mateo County is the fastest-growing homeless population in the county. Recently, the county has observed a troubling trend that older adults are increasingly becoming a significant portion of those experiencing homelessness. Notably, four in 10 individuals who become homeless are doing so for the first time past the age of 55. And their latest write-up highlights the unique challenges faced by older adults within our shelter system. Many of them are confronting a harsh reality of slipping into homelessness later in life, a situation exacerbated by factors such as fixed incomes, health issues, the loss of a spouse, and limited affordable housing options. In light of these findings, our Board of Supervisors recently approved $3.5 million in major cave funds for emergency financial assistance. A portion of these funds are earmarked specifically for seniors. And I hope that we can continue our partnership with the county to addressing homelessness and preventing it in the first place. In line with, you know, in addition to that, you know, the Scam Stopper event that our Vice Mayor Eddie Flores and I will be hosting, you know, later this week on Friday, as well as the following week on Thursday, I hope that you all may be able to attend. It's not just, you know, seniors who are experiencing scams. These scams are getting very sneaky, very sophisticated, and many young people are also at risk of these scams. And we want to make sure that entire community is safe and that we are able to spot scams quickly and easily, and that we are able to keep more dollars in our pockets. And so with that said, I believe we can move on to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll begin with Dolores Piper.
Mayor Coleman and members of the council, I was sent the impression that from last council meeting that we were going to have a list of those city-owned properties that could be swapped out for the municipal services building. Where are we with that? Can you update us with that? For some reason, I came tonight thinking that there would be this list. Does it come out of the Planning Department, or where does it come from, this list of public city-owned properties? I'd like to see that. Just wanted to make mention of some of the people in this county who have died, who had mental health issues. Yanira Serrano Garcia in Half Moon Bay, 18 years old. Her family called the police to just help with getting her to take her medication. And they had done that in the past, and they did not want police. But the sheriff deputy that saw the call and came rushing to the house, she walked out with a paring knife, and he shot her dead right there. Warren Riguto in Daly City, 34 years old, again, in a mental crisis, his family trying to hold him down. Police came, tased him twice, and killed him. Shinedu Okobi in Milbrae, acting erratically, walking across back and forth the street. Police targeted him, tased him to death. So Errol Chang in Pacifica, having a mental crisis. And he was barricaded in the house. They brought the SWAT team in. And it's protocol for police not to allow the family to intervene in any way, even though they begged that they thought they could calm him down. Of course, they killed him. So thinking about these issues and mental health is really important because I imagine that there are all these people in jail who have mental health issues. That's the only place to put them these days. There's nothing really for them. And so you can imagine what a crisis and how terrorizing that must be to have a mental illness and be in jail. So I'm glad that we're aware of NAMI, and I hope that they do establish a center up here in this part of the peninsula. Thank you.
Moving on to Catherine Acosta.
I stand here as a city, a South City resident, and behalf of a few of my fellow Old Town residents who cannot be here but are equally upset about the city's plans to build a park at Linden in Pine. We want to raise our voices and say no to Sludge Park. On the city's website, residents are asked to take a survey and submit feedback on park features. A few Old Town neighbors said it was similar to the spring outreach event. But what they were shocked to learn via the website was that the land previously held underwater gas and water oil, or waste oil for 60 years, and contaminated soil removal and testing were routinely performed. A 2022 San Mateo Daily Journal article stated that the site had been examined for housing, but that would have required extensive and expensive cleanup estimated to cost $800,000. Still, Councilman Arriego and then Mayor Nagales was pretty stoked. They were pretty stoked about offering it up for South San Francisco kids. Our future, my future. We residents can get our heads around the idea of brownfield conversions, and have read the recent summary report on the soil safety. But the big questions are, why didn't anyone tell the residents of a soil issue when they were given tours of the park for which Kevin Mullen came through with a big check? You thought enough to discuss it with the Daily Journal in 2022, and about a week ago, you released a safety report on your website. Don't you think that was a critical fact for their consideration when you were gathering their interest in a park gazebo? Also, residents have spoken of their concerns with blocking critical passways, but they were rebuffed by Councilman Flores's insistence that garbage fire and engineering trucks can enter. So I guess that's all that mattered. I guess another obvious question is where in the survey is the option for me to select, not on a parcel that has been identified as a toxic site and that none of the ravenous developers have wanted either? I say this in all seriousness because I really think, you all know, that if you tried to offer up a children's park on toxic soil in any other neighborhood, you'd have parents marching in the streets. If the city moves forward, I will tell all my kids and my grandkids who live on that side, that we will wait until we see all of your kids and grandkids crawling and playing there on a regular basis before we set foot on it. Lastly, I thought Rise SSF, and so did the Old Town Neighbors, they thought they were the nonprofit located in that neighborhood that focused on environment and Latinx, and Latinx community. I mean, this is right up their alley to be involved, as their own website identifies 616 Linden as a toxic site. But instead, all I can find was a recent activity and a letter in the Daily Journal about the MSB.
Thank you.
For over two years, we, as a united community, have persistently advocated for the removal of the MSB from the housing element and its reopening as an intergenerational community center. Our resolve remains unwavering. We have endured your glaring intimidation tactics and dismissals. We stand firm in our resolve. Your actions, like cutting people off during public comments because they go over the three minutes, can you do something here? Do you see your neighbors, hardworking folks who are struggling, who come before garbage day with their baby in a stroller and go through recycling to make ends meet? Most of you who work for the city don't live here, yet you can dictate and control what happens to our city. You can all sit up there on your laurels, not give the funds for internet services, take away a community center, build a park on toxic soil, then pat yourselves on the back for this so-called beautiful building. And that's all it is, is a building. Mayor Coleman, we have not been deceived by your questionable actions, including your use of surrogates who don't reside in South San Francisco. We have been vigilant in uncovering your attempts to undermine our cause, such as placing Coleman campaign signs in front of our MSB signs. It's not funny. This deceptive act, pretending to align with our cause while overshadowing our advocacy, only reveals your disregard for the community's wishes. Our vigilance is unwavering, and we will continue to uncover any further attempts to deceive us. And to your defenders who claim your job is so hard, we know it is, and we are watching, always ready to uncover further attempts to deceive. You were elected, and you took an oath to be stewards at the public's trust, not self-serving your own interests or future political agenda. Or perhaps these council chambers reduce the ability for some of us to hear properly. People who live here are sane, so let us make it clear to all who are listening. The time has come for a change in South San Francisco leadership. We want leaders who prioritize community needs, fiscal responsibility, transparency in decision-making. We urge everyone to vote for this change. A community's voice can no longer be ignored. A community's voice can no longer be ignored. Our determination is unwavering and we will continue to advocate for this change until it becomes a reality.
I thought I would use my bimonthly one-sided comments with council to switch it up from being your adversary to being a problem solver. Without debating the wisdom of trading a $27 million fully functioning building for a bunch of dirt lots, let me give it a shot. When the council was considering removing the MSB from the housing element last meeting, sincere or not, some concerns were vocalized. It was suggested that a future council could possibly put it back in, but now that the residents are aware, we will make sure no one is seated at the dais that will ignore the will of the people. Who knows, maybe a government receiver will be running things in the future. When entertaining a swap for the Orange Library parcel, concerns were expressed that residents in proximity might object. Is Southwood more important than Bury-Bury? Even more troubling is the assumption that we are protecting the neighborhood when our objective is to save a facility of value to the community. Could it be the concern over the Orange Library swap as an attempt by one of our council members to protect wealthy members of the adjacent California Country Club from murd and blight? In addition, housing authorities have expressed their reluctance to concentrate low-income housing in one area, wanting it to mix with more upscale housing. Have any of you been to Bury-Bury? You need to raise your standards. Besides, you want a more affluent mix to locate your low-income housing? What could be better than golffront property with a view on an exclusive country club? It's a win-win, gang. Well, except for the shadows cast on those poor suffering club members. Now, it seems that you have adjusted your protocols on applause, but I'm going to go ahead in case you change your mind again. Now about applause in the council chambers. As the council somehow has a questionable disdain for constitutionally guaranteed freedoms, let's all revel in the fact that we are all in this together. Applause routinely accompanies awards and certificates handed out in this chamber. The public comments are often accompanied by your smirks and eye-rolling, but we are all human, so we tolerate it. In fact, a past council member publicly attacked me with a profanity-laced tirade as the rest of the Mullen-led council looked on. More recently, you threatened a speaker with an unwarranted illegal arrest. Talk about sensitive. So, gang, a reminder, it is the people's chamber, not the council chamber, as you are all just passing through. Assuming our weaponized city attorney can't find a constitutional statute in a Canadian province to prevent applause, we'll tolerate your behavior if you tolerate ours. Deal.
You have approved the toxic contaminated site in Old Town as a playground and park at Linden and Pine. We have a public records request concerning the site and this project must be halted until we have reviewed those reports. Our streets and parks are rundown in many areas of the city and Westboro Boulevard has an ugly ice or green smear as a bike lane. Taxpayers paid for its application, removal, and reapplication. When Councilman Nagales was mayor, he wanted to make it a priority that $32 million be spent on bike and pedestrian trails for the east side. However, the recent resurfacing in Old Town was left riddled with debris of asphalt bits scattered over sidewalks, piled in the streets on residents' walkways, yards, and homes. After learning the subcontractor would not do cleanup, a resident sought assistance from the police department, only to be told they were short-staffed, which we've heard this several times, residents go to the police department for non-emergency help. We have reviewed and published the transparent California salaries for 2023 and it is appalling the salaries our 65,000 middle-to-low-middle-income residents are paying. And we still have the CalPERS pension debt that continues until the retiree or spouse dies. But we are $8 million to $20 million in debt, depending on which reports are reviewed. The city manager said she would not commit her staff to help council concerning taking the MSB out of the housing element, but she did commit her staff to finding a facilitator when the fee escalated to $80,000. The city manager's answers to council, not the other way around. As I've contacted Mayor Coleman in the past, he replies with, he has to ask Sharon. The District Four Town Hall was more telling who is running District Four. Sharon has shown nothing but disdain for our residents and she wants the MSB demolished. But since Mayor Coleman seeks her direction and her counsel, we ask for Mayor Coleman's recusal on any decisions concerning the future of the MSB. Mayor Coleman, our city is not a hobby or a game. When someone has life experience who is gainfully employed and paying job, a paying job working with others, that's how you learn about serving and deciding on a profession in politics. But with no other life experiences, you're making decisions on hard-working people's lives that will affect them forever. What's nice about this election, it's a contested election for two council seats. James, you're already playing dirty politics and the race has barely begun.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I am glad that we have honored some small businesses today. But it is my understanding that the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit corporation solely supported by its membership. Mary Prim, as president of the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, is actively involved in the political campaign for Mayor James Coleman. Most recently, in September, just not too long ago, she and James were at Atlas Pizza in San Bruno, where they were hosted at a mayor's and city council race event, a political campaign event. Other attendees were there, including Daly City Mayor Jocelyn Manolo, San Mateo County Sheriff Christina Corpus, Supervisor David Canapa, and San Bruno City members, Tom Hamilton and Marty Medina. So what's important here to note is that according to the IRS Code for 501(c), Section 6, if an organization like the Chamber of Commerce engages in political and/or lobbying activities, it may need to give its members notice of dues for such activities or be subject to a proxy tax on the amount of expenditures. Furthermore, the upcoming Chamber of Commerce Awards, which is typically scheduled for November, has now been moved up to October by Mary Prim to support James Coleman with a mayor's award. This action risks South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce's status as a nonprofit organization. Where's their credibility? Thank you.
Moving on to Tom Carney. And Mr. Carney had public comments on consent calendar items numbers 10, 11, 12, 14, and 15.
Thank you, Council. So I'm sure you're going to suppress my comments tonight because you won't allow me speak on each item which the Brown Act allows, so you're going to violate that again ongoing. What I want to talk to you about is the spewing garbage cans that I passed on to ROSA that never ends, dates for over two weeks. And yes, with small businesses, they're leaving. There's 28 gone already in the downtown. Count the plywood sheets that's on the street. You think raising a family, I want to take my kids downtown, walk them down to watch this blight? We have a park, Irish Greens, another polluted site that you gave us as a community where the person was strangled a few years ago because of the blight, the trash, and the homeless. You know, when does it end? Furthermore is Oyster Point. Mark Nagales, you were telling us when you were mayor that you had a slush fund of what, close to $20 million that you wanted to spend, quality of life, East 01 employees? What about us as residents? We just want potholes, streets fixed, and sidewalks. It's a toxic site. So we're doing monitoring. The Linden Park, Irish Greens, and the Green Spot at Linden and Hillside is toxic sites. They were former gas stations, dump sites, but yet you give them to the minority community for their kids to play in? I challenge you, take your kids there. It's good enough for my kids, it's good for yours. So when are we going to be heard as residents? Are we going to be stomped on? Because that's what you're doing. You're not listening to us, but elections are coming. And Mark, if you have this slush fund, which you said as mayor, and now you're cutting a horse deal for almost a million dollars for the developer, we're paying for his cleanup and we're paying for his monitoring? If he bought it, he lives with it, he knew what he was getting into. Why should I pay for it? I want my streets fixed. And furthermore is I want calls returned to me and emails that I sent to Public Works. If they don't want to do their job, find a job somewhere else. I'm not angry, I'm disappointed in the five of you. James, you've been mayor for a year almost and you've done nothing. And I give you pictures every council meeting. Mark Nagales, you cut this deal on this insurance policy or the cleanup. Why? If they bought it, they bought it. It's one of the disclosures, if they didn't read it, that's their problem, not mine. I shouldn't pay for it. And these seniors certainly should have a senior center and not be stomped on. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening. Could everybody hear me? I have lived in South San Francisco my entire life. I have never experienced the magnitude of deception that took place in moving forward with the rash decision made years ago by former Mayor Garberino and Mark Diego on risking human lives, lives in Old Town who have never mattered to them or to our city. The deception started when receiving that faithful call from Ms. Sharon Reynolds, our city manager, soliciting support for a park and told that the only other option is high-rise buildings. High-rises that block residents' windows and continue destroying historic neighborhood, all while conveniently emitting the most crucial information about the loss being highly contaminated and dangerous to human life. What's beyond disbelief is that Ms. Reynolds conveniently chose an advocate set out to end the abuse and injustices from the abuse of power and that, and a person who highly respected her. What mother solicited another mother to jeopardize her own health and her children? The deception continued as more participants began to engage in the magnitude of deception and manipulation as crucial information continued to be purposely withheld throughout discussions, meetings, and events while MIG was hired to use persuasive tactics during outreach events. The majority are still on the dock about these life-threatening dangers. Meanwhile, input continues to be solicited for a park to be constructed on toxic soil on calling for a closure of a street that was designed and constructed with safety in mind decades ago, where there is yet to be an impact study. It is irresponsible and insulting to accept a park at 616 Linden on Irish Greens and it is especially cruel to take advantage of a disadvantaged community that continues to be marginalized by our own city who holds the ultimate responsibility in ensuring that every life matters and every minute counts in saving a life. Mr. Flores, may I please remind you of what led to the civil war in your country, El Salvador? Ms. Sharon Reynolds, Mr. Greg Mediate, Mr. Philip Metalli should be immediately relieved of their duties for intentionally maliciously disregarding human lives and placing residents in meeting danger by the omission of crucial information and continuing to market for more voices. Mr. Flores' association with Rise SSF demonstrates his knowledge of his site is toxic and never communicate this information to Spanish speakers. He went further to vocalize the manipulation to the last council meeting. Ms. Denardi, it is insulting to reach out to try to silence me. Por favor, mi gente, no se dejen de engañar del señor Flores ni de la ciudad. De seguro, nadie les informó que el terreno en la calle Linden donde tienen planeado construir un parque está contaminado. ¿Qué ha hecho el señor Flores para nuestros hijos? No nos sigan siendo engañados cuando nos dice que la vivienda es para nosotros. This park project must be abandoned. Councilmember Diego should step down for continuing to dehumanize every resident in Old Town. Councilmember Flores and Chair Ruth Denardi should step down for endangering human lives and a Spanish, fluent Spanish speakers he felt to protect and represent our community. City Clerk Rosa Costa must step down immediately for continuing to continue abuse her staff. To all in the room, everyone in the room, please stand up against all injustices and wrongdoings from city leaders. It is time to bring life to all the proclamations about child cancer, suicide, and bullying and not just being words on paper.
Good evening, council members and everybody in the room watching. Toxic playgrounds, toxic planning, fiscal mismanagement, toxic politics. To the South San Francisco Chamber of Commerce, under the Internal Revenue Code, Section 501(c)(3), organizations are absolutely prohibited from directly or indirectly participating or intervening in any political campaign, Mr. Flores and Mr. Coleman, on behalf of or in opposition to when anybody is running for political office. Under California Government Code, Section 82015, Subsection B3, political campaign contributions include the payment of public money by a local governmental agency for communication that benefits incumbent candidates. Your true intentions were on display, Mr. Coleman, very early on into your term. What, six months? You abandoned everybody to run for assembly, is that what it was? Uh-huh. Surprise. And then you defy the call of another council member just two weeks ago to stop using public resources disguised as public service to have unfair advantage over your, as an incumbent over public opposition, political opposition. So you led an assault on our constitutional rights recently, all of you. How much money did you pay, Mr. Woodruff, to just drum up some ridiculous garbage about signs, et cetera? Shortly after that, you, on 8/24, I think it was, recently, you told us all to refrain from clapping. And tonight, you're celebrating the United States Constitution. Flip-flop. I don't know. You know what? I'm going to leave it right there because all of you know what you're doing. You think we don't know what you're doing. That's the joke here. You're the joke. You think we're stupid, we're morons, and that you can do this? Really? We'll see about that. Ridiculous. So it's not just lack of experience, we're dealing with a tyrant.
That concludes our speakers for tonight unless there's someone else in the audience wishes to speak.
We have business to get to, so consent calendar, please.
Item number eight is a motion to approve the minutes for August 27th and August 28th, 2024. Item number nine is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the acceptance of $4,069.14 in funding from San Mateo County Registration and Elections Division to support a 29-day vote center at the main library, Library Parks and Recreation Center for the November 5th, 2024 Presidential General Election and amending the Library Department's fiscal year 2024-25 operating budget via Budget Amendment Number 25.013. Item 9A is a resolution. Item 10 is a report regarding a resolution to approve a second amendment with CSS Environmental Services Incorporated of Nevado, California, for the environmental monitoring of the former Oyster Point landfill in an amount not to exceed $257,039 for an additional two years, authorizing a total budget of $949,139 and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Item 10A is a resolution. Item 11 is a report regarding a resolution- Item 11 is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a services agreement with the South San Francisco Unified School District in an amount not to exceed $635,378 for the Parks and Recreation Department to operate an extended learning program for students enrolled in the South San Francisco Unified School District Expanded Learning Opportunities Program for the 2024-25 school year. Item 11A is a resolution. Item 12 is a report regarding an ordinance adding Chapter 8.78 mooring regulations to the South San Francisco Municipal Code to provide regulations for mooring in the city's navigable waterways. Item 12A is the ordinance. Item 13 is a report regarding a second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 8.72 of the Disposable Food Service Ware Ordinance to prohibit the sale of polystyrene foam products. Item 13A is the ordinance. Item 14 is a report regarding a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a 15-year lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the construction of a wireless communication facility at 323 Miller Avenue and authorizing the city manager to approve the agreement. Item 14A is a resolution. Item 15 is a report regarding a resolution approving the city council's response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report dated July 11, 2024, entitled "The State of Compost Compliance in San Mateo County" and authorizing the city manager to send the response letter on behalf of the city council. Item 15A is a resolution.
Any items to be pulled from the council?
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Councilmember Ediego?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nogales?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative business, item number 16 is a report regarding the formation of the Eastern Neighborhoods CFD.
Christina Fernandez, your deputy city manager. We're here tonight with an update on the Eastern Neighborhoods CFD to provide you with an update on the feedback that we've received, based on what we've heard over the last five months during our outreach process. With me tonight, we have some key members of our team. We have Jason Wong, Deputy Director of Finance, Noah Christman, Lighthouse Public Affairs, and we also have Susan Goodwin of Goodwin Consulting Group and Brian Forbath of Stradling Law on the line tonight. So given that our last meeting on this was back in March, we're going to start off with just a simple recap of some basic mechanics of a CFD. I'll then step through the proposal and the project list. Noah will then go through what we've heard as a result of our outreach, and Susan and Jason will then walk us through the proposed rates. I'll then conclude with our next steps, and we have Q and A at the end, but please feel free to interrupt us at any time. So just a quick refresh on the CFD. CFD stands for Community Facilities District. It is regulated by state law. It creates a special tax district that allows property owners to tax themselves to fund infrastructure improvements. It does require two-thirds of the property owners to vote in favor of it for approval. And although the CFD is included on a property tax bill as a line item, it is not a property tax. It's also an annual rate that is charged and not a monthly rate. It's really flexible in that it can be funded, in what can be funded with it. And you'll find that the projects proposed tonight are the result of not just city plans, but are also shaped by what were identified as employer needs east of 101. So it's important to go back to the why, right? Why are we doing this? Back when we first started the CFD back in 2019, you know, we first anticipated a near doubling of jobs east of 101 with about 45,000 employees. Per our general plan work, we are now anticipating jumping from 45,000 east of 101 to over 101,000 employees by 2040. We're also going to see an increase of about 10,000 residents, hotel guests and daytime visitors east of 101 during this timeframe. So the proposed projects are based on years of planning and studies dating back to 2018, with the Mobility 2020 study followed up by our transportation master plan known as Active South City. In 2022, additional studies were done as a part of our general plan efforts. These plans were also analyzed and studied by an employer-led transportation group known as the Oyster Point Mobility Steering Committee. This year, the plan is even more refined through the Complete Streets Corridor Study. The CFD is really the mechanism for implementing many of these impactful projects. So the actual plan is, the plan, the city has had many goals in forming a CFD, and those include making this a really holistic plan, where all of these projects really work together and not one mode of transportation is prioritized over the other. The proposal also prioritizes safety and access for everyone. For instance, creating a transit-only lane not only benefits commuter shuttles and Samtrans, but it also benefits cars and bikes from not having to share lanes with large buses and trucks, and so it improves the safety for everyone. It's also important that everyone who is paying into the CFD is provided enhanced infrastructure and services. Therefore, the potential boundaries of the CFD is really focused on the core area east So, as mentioned earlier, the potential CFD boundaries reflect the inclusion of properties who will see enhanced infrastructure and services. The boundaries include what is considered to be the core east of 101, and with that, I'll go through the proposed corridor improvements and project list. So the next few slides will summarize how the CFD would transform the east of 101 areas' transportation system, and how improvements for all roadway users would be layered onto the area's existing transportation network. In terms of roadway rehabilitation, the CFD would start by repaving all public streets within the east of 101 area, covering a total of 17 miles. These streets have experienced a disproportionate amount of wear and tear due to heavy truck traffic, and the CFD would allow for more rehab and maintenance than the city is otherwise able to provide. Repaved streets will provide a blank canvas to layer on improvements for all users. Transit improvements will include two miles of transit-only lanes, upgrades to two dozen bus and shuttle stops, and access improvements for the Caltrain station, ferry terminal and bus and shuttle stops in the area. These improvements will focus on East Grand, Oyster Point, Gateway and South Airport, which are the workhorses for transit service in the area. The pedestrian improvements will occur throughout the east of 101 area and will create more walkable neighborhoods with wider sidewalks, landscaping, curb extensions, high-visibility crosswalks and other traffic calming measures. In particular, pedestrian improvements would focus around the highest-density areas serving the largest volumes of pedestrians, such as the Caltrain station. The CFD would add five miles of new protected bikeways and trails, which are shown in orange and green on this map. This would result in eight new or enhanced bike-ped connections across 101. These bike improvements in particular would benefit both employees and residents of South City, as there would be numerous low-stress paths for bikes across 101 to the Bay Trail and other destinations east of 101. Now we're going to look at a few renderings of what these changes could mean for individual So as we all know, Oyster Point Boulevard is a wide street that carries a lot of traffic during commute hours, and this is how it currently looks. The CFD would enable adding bus lanes, a two-way protected bike lane, wider sidewalks and a landscaped median. Currently, this is East Grand, near the Caltrain station. East Grand Avenue near the Caltrain station essentially functions as an extension of the freeway off-ramp today. It's not a great place to walk or bike despite its proximity to the downtown and the Caltrain The CFD would help advance improvements that the city and Caltrain have identified in a 2021 access study, including new traffic signals, a two-way protected bike lane and improved circulation for shuttles. Another major arterial is East Grand, and this is what it looks like today. The CFD would support the addition of bus lanes, protected bike lanes and improved sidewalks and pedestrian crossings. Back at the Caltrain station, this is the current view of Paletti Way. And here's another look at improvements to the shuttle loading area and a new trail along Paletti Way that would connect all the way to the Bay Trail. Utah Avenue in its current form is a high-speed, four-lane street today that's overbuilt for the traffic volume it serves, and it's missing sidewalks in some of the areas like at the right side of this photo. The CFD would provide a road diet with new sidewalks and a two-way protected bikeway while continuing to accommodate truck and vehicle traffic. And with that, I'll hand it over to Noah Christman from Lighthouse Public Affairs for an update on our engagement process.
Thank you, Christina. So again, Noah Christman from Lighthouse Public Affairs. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members for having us this evening. So the CFD area is large and diverse. It is truly a vast and varied area. 981 acres comprised of 479 individual parcels ranging from roughly a twentieth of an acre to 23 acres in size. It's made up of 332 different property owners. And I've, we've listed the diversity of property uses here, just to give you a sense of how diverse this area truly is. Everything from hospital to the biotech and industrial that we know, but also food processing, parking structures, auto sales and repair, service stations. And I include all that, just to note that the goals and the needs of this area are just as diverse as all of the uses and the size of this area. And so we kept that in mind as we went through and had these conversations. So you might recall, in the last time we brought this to you, we talked about our plan going forward. And just to go over what we've covered of the last few months, we created sssf-cfd.com. We presented that to you in March. That's the information repository that anybody can visit to learn more about the CFD, to reach out to us and engage with us in any manner of formats. We did two rounds of mailed letters to the property owners, the county's address on file for all the property owners. We did two rounds of door-to-door outreach. Personally, I think I've walked all of those 17 miles twice at a minimum, trying to engage with tenants and property owners and just make sure they're aware of this information. We've done two rounds of community town halls, six per round. Those were spread across in-person meetings here in council chambers, virtual meetings, trying to eliminate any barrier for getting stakeholders involved in this process. Dozens of one-on-one meetings, countless emails and calls, targeted door-knocking to unresponsive property owners. We've reached out to groups like SFS Peninsula, the Conference Center. We've even reached out to leasing agents for vacant properties to try to get in contact with those property owners. Gone through the California Secretary of State, basically knocked down every door, every opportunity to get in contact and share information about the CFD with all the key stakeholders in the area. So what we've heard, and this is by no means universally shared, but in general, property owners want to see safer corridors, upgraded streets, better connectivity throughout the area, and really all transportation modes respected and benefited. And that last one's really key, because as Christina mentioned, there's heavy trucks, there's employees' cars, there's bicycles, there's pedestrians, making sure that all these modes are treated fairly equally and all benefit from the projects being put forth as part of the CFD. There are concerns, though, and those concerns are, you can see here, simply an equitable assessment of rates. Various property owners feel different assessments would be equitable, so we're trying to thread that needle and find a common ground where property owners can see a CFD that works for them and is assessed equitably. Many see, some see that this is a, could be a financial burden for property owners and their tenants. Some property owners have remarked this is just another tax, and they want to make sure it is clear where their revenue, where their, this tax is going. There has been some finger-pointing of who is causing the mobility problems in this area, whether it's life science, whether it's the big trucks on industrial tearing up the streets, and so trying to smooth that over and make sure that everyone understands that there are multiple uses in the area, and they're all contributing to the state of the mobility environment. There's a concern that this is a plan to force out land uses, to gentrify the east of 101 area to make it predominantly life science or office. That is certainly not the case, and we've talked to those property owners who have had that fear. And then there's this concern about the timeline for implementation. That's really twofold. That's this concern that when the city levies a tax, it'll be a tax in perpetuity. And secondly, when, when projects are, the ground is broken on these projects, how long it'll actually take to get these things fully implemented? And I feel like through the outreach that we've done, we'd be able to assuage and resolve these concerns for the majority of property owners that we have spoken with. So moving forward, what this looks like, a CFD requires two-thirds votes from property owners. But what that looks like is not each, it's not one vote for a property owner. For each parcel that they have, you get one vote for an acre or a portion of an acre. So if you have that twentieth of an acre parcel, you still get one vote. If you have that 23-acre parcel, you get 23 votes. And so the process will go that ballots will be issued and property owners get to vote on the CFD to see whether it passes, and it requires that two-thirds. Once it passes, if it passes, it is then governed by you all, by city and council. However, to keep property owners engaged, the city has proposed an advisory panel that can provide, made up of property owners, that can provide non-binding advice to how projects are prioritized and executed throughout the life of the CFD. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Susan Goodwin of Susan Goodwin Consulting to talk about the financial model, basically what are the proposed rates and what does that look like for bonding? Susan, are you on the phone?
I'm here. I'm here.
Perfect. Just let me know when you need to advance slides.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. So as Noah mentioned, there is still a lot of discussion going on, and there's sort of what we know today and what it's still in a process of discussion. But right now, the proposal is that the property owners will, the special tax will be levied per square foot of developed building on the parcels. And the proposed rates at this point that are under discussion are the life science and office uses, 65 cents per square foot. Residential would be 25 cents per square foot. And then with the warehouse, industrial and other uses that are in this kind of catch-all category, if it's a smaller building, the first, well, for any building really, but with the first 25,000 square feet, so if it's 25,000, if it's less than 25,000 square foot, this, that square feet, this would apply to all the square footage, and it would be 5 cents per square foot. If it's a larger building, the 5 cents would apply to the first 25,000 square feet. The second 25,000 square feet would be taxed at 10 cents per square foot, and then anything above 50,000 square feet would be 15 cents per square feet, I mean, per square foot. And based on running estimates of bonding capacity, based on conservative interest rates on, based on the current environment, 30-year term, which is typical for these, these bonds, for Melrose bonds, approximately $118 million could be generated, assuming participation of the owners within the boundary that was shown earlier, based on the square footage of those uses. Thank you. At the very earliest, and this would be an accelerated schedule, the CFD could be put together and bonds could be sold sometime in spring or summer of 2025. But again, that's a But again, that's an aggressive schedule, assuming that everything came together very quickly. If that were the case, if bonds were sold in, anytime before really fall of 2025, I'm sorry, before summer of 2025, the deadline to get special taxes on the tax rule is generally the first week of August, and then the first installment would show up on the special, on the property tax bills. First installment would be due by December 10th of 2025, and the second installment would be due by April 10th of 2026. Now again, that's if everything came together quickly and we could get on the next fiscal year tax rule after spring of 2025. As I mentioned, it'd be a 30-year bond. There is an option to have multiple bond issues in the initial years, and each of those bond issues would have a 30-year term. Next one.
Great. Thanks, Susan.
Yeah.
Thank you. So huge thanks to the team for all their work on this. And I'm sorry, I failed to mention Matt Rubel is also here with us tonight, so he can definitely help answer some questions. So now I'd like to go through our next steps. Should there be consensus that you all would like to, you know, move forward with something like this? So this is a slide we've used many times in the past to show the formation process in detail. As you can see, a number of approvals must be met in order to form a CFD. If there is consensus that we should move forward, a petition will need to be signed by two council members moving this forward. Staff will then bring this back 90 days after that petition is signed for the first meeting where the council would adopt a resolution of intention to establish a CFD and incur bonded indebtedness. 30 to six days after that, we would return to host a public hearing and request council adopt a resolution of formation. At this meeting, the council would also adopt a resolution calling an election. 90 to 180 days later, a third meeting would be held where an election would be, or an election would be held and ballots would be opened. If approved, a resolution would be adopted confirming the results of the election. And two weeks later, a second reading would take place to adopt the special tax ordinance, ordering the levying of special taxes within the CFD. So as you can see, this process is quite lengthy and is required by state law. So to close, staff is seeking council feedback and direction on the possible formation of a CFD, and if appropriate, scheduling associated city council meetings listed on the previous slide to move forward with formation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and the team's happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. I guess I'll kick off with the first question. For the next steps, petition filed by property owners or by two council members, are you looking for the council members to file that petition?
Yeah, typically, I mean, it's my understanding that typically when CFDs are formed, they are developer-led, such that it is a single developer that would ask the city to form a CFD. Given that there are multiple property owners, and this is such a huge CFD, we would request that council, that two council members do sign a petition kicking this off. That being said, if, you know, if there's not an appetite for that, we do have large property owners who are in favor of the CFD, who may, you know, may be willing to start the process.
On the proposed, on the proposed advisory panel, how does the composition, how were you thinking the composition will be?
Well, I think, the way that I understand it, it would be something that is not legally binding. It really is advisory. We want to make sure that the folks that are participating and paying into the CFD are able to provide some sort of, they have some sort of voice, right? Especially when it comes to the prioritization of some of those projects. But maybe I'll hand it off to Susan or Brian, maybe they have more to provide on that.
Yeah, hi, this is Brian Forbath from Stradlin Yaca. Again, the advisory panel is not a requirement under CFD law. It's something added, I think, based on the outreach to property owners that could be beneficial to the success of the project. And so I think there's a lot of flexibility for the city council in determining how they would like that advisory panel to be composed of, whether it's, you know, the largest property owners who pay the largest share part of it, if there's a mix of property owners and so forth. But that's something that could be determined down the road here if and when the council decides to move this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, and everyone involved. I really love visuals, so I appreciate the renderings and all of that. Have a few questions for you. Can you reconcile on the pie chart, the vacant land at 8% and then the 32% that are the unknown, are the unknown part of the vacant land, or is that just two separate ones?
Um, I'm sorry, you're referring to the--
Referring to the breakdown of warehouse, industrial versus other land uses. Not sure what page that, that was on the staff report.
Yeah, a lot of that is, I know that that was taken from the county assessor's office, and they have various codes for various land use types. I will say that while you do see that, you know, industrial makes up about 48% of the land use type out there, given the rate at which they will be charged, life science will be covering the bulk of the CFD in terms of, you know, how much they're going to be paying.
But my question is, on the vacant land, do we know who, who are the owners of those vacant lands, or is that--
Isn't it that we are only doing the tax on--
Yeah.
--developed area?
Exactly. We do have, we do have a property roll list that lists all of the different properties, so we do know all of the different owners. That being said, if it's vacant land and there's nothing developed, they don't get charged because the maximum tax rate is based on square footage of developed area.
Okay. And then on the staff report, I read that 32% of the total voting acres are unknown and therefore listed as unknown.
Correct.
So you're going to continue to do outreach, or what is going to happen to those 32%?
Yeah, we're still continuing, as Noah mentioned, you know, there's been door knocking throughout the area, trying to get folks, you know, trying to get some sort of response from folks. It's been very difficult. But that being said, we will continue that process.
And turning to Sky, what happens there? Is there anything that the city can do if there's multiple outreach, et cetera, but yet we still don't know or consider them unknown total voting acres? Could we, what are, I guess, options there?
Well, ask Brian to weigh in about this as well, but--
Yeah.
But, go ahead, Brian, and I'll add in.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the Melrose laws is pretty clear, you send it to the property, and it shows on the last equalized property tax rule. So wherever the property tax bills are going, that's where the ballot would be going. And I think Susan's firm and shop would be working to get information from the county assessors about who those property owners are and the apertures for each of the APNs that are within the boundaries of the ballot. So just because we don't know who they are today, it doesn't mean that we won't, we will know who they are. At least we'll know an address, a name of the entity that, where the tax bill goes when the ballots are sent.
Yeah, and just to clarify, we do know who the property owners are, right? There's a property owner listed for each of these parcels. It's just that there have been some that have been unresponsive. So about 30% have been unresponsive to our outreach efforts. And so it's unknown if they are, you know, committed, or if they're, you know, lean opposed. I mean, we just, we don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then question about the priority list. Was that, I get it that it was multiple factors. I said, I think you mentioned stakeholders, as well as some of our city plans that were taken into account, General Plan, Act of South City, the mobility, et cetera. Are these numbers current? Because I know we've been working on this and looking at priority lists and rates, et cetera, or potential total costs for a Y. Are these current?
Yes. It's my understanding these are current numbers. Daniel Jacobson from Farr and Pierce actually put this together in coordination with Mark Thomas. So we did have a professional transportation firm, you know, refresh these numbers, look at the corridors, totally redo this list, and you will see that, you know, there's 2024 numbers, and then there's 2035 numbers, and there's quite an escalation in cost if you were to wait some time to get this done.
Right. And then, so implementation after the votes and the hearings, et cetera, like when, is it all tier one happen at the same time, or is it, how does it, the implementation actually start to occur?
Yeah, that's--
If you don't know, it's totally okay.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something that I think we still have to have discussions about. I will say that these top priorities, when they were put into the top priority bucket, we definitely looked at projects that we felt were most impactful and that projects, were projects that we could, you know, feasibly get done, right? Like, I will say tier three railroad avenue, that's contingent on a variety of factors in terms of like, you know, land acquisition and things like that, whereas I feel like tier one is much more feasible and a quicker timeframe. So those factors were taken into consideration when we were tiering the projects.
Gotcha. Thank you. And then, so I know you meant, or you mentioned some of the concerns that were coming up as, as part of the outreach efforts. Where did we land with some of those concerns? Were folks more like interested in, okay, we'll see, we'll have discussions and dialogue, or were they very firm, like, this is it, we're not budging kind of scenario?
Yes, both.
Okay.
It really depends on where they're coming from, and I can't say that there's one certain property type that leans one direction and one leans completely opposite. It really just comes down to how long, maybe how long they've been in the area, what they feel like their current tax load is, whether they feel like they would see real meaningful impacts from these improvements. And so you might have, as one example, you might have a hotel here and a hotel here. This hotel is all in favor of it. The hotel on the other side of the road is completely against it because they just believe, they see different benefits to it, or drawbacks from it, I should say.
Sure. And now that you touched on hotels, so how would that partake? I didn't really catch on where hotels would fit in. Is it a tax on the hotel occupant, or is it a kind of like a TOT, or what is it?
Hotels would be assessed just like any other property. They would fall under that third tier, that industrial warehouse--
Under that, okay.
So it's the progressive tier with the first 25,000 square feet--
Okay.
--and 5 cents a square foot, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nigales, or Adiego, any, any comments?
It's more of a technical question. So when you look at the map, it encompasses all the east of 101. You know, if we have a property owner or property owners that don't know, but they still don't want to move forward with this, what are, are they just out of luck in a sense? Are there options where they don't pay into this, or they're pretty much, they're locked in, now they have to pay?
Yeah, Brian Forbath from Stradlin, and so once the boundaries are established and, you know, if they're in the district, if they vote against it, it's a two-thirds, you know, supermajority that if it passes and they're in the boundaries, they will be taxed, even if they were opposed to it.
Okay. And when we looked at it, do we consider potentially maybe drawing out particular businesses because of financial impacts it might have on the particular business, or I guess the landowner, you might say? So, and how do we, I guess, answer like, we did, if we did, I'm assuming we did, justify including everyone?
Yeah. So the rates are structured in a way where we feel, where the city has, feels that even the smallest property owner, even the property owners that feel like they would have a tax on us, would be able to afford paying into this. Granted, we don't know the leasing structure, the, you know, the tenants of all of these property owners, but that progressive rate for industrial warehouse and other came about after a lot of conversations with some of these really small industrial property owners who were concerned that, I think the original proposal was 15 cents, that was just going to be too much of a burden. So through a number of conversations, that progressive structure came out. That said, and I think Brian or Susan could also weigh in on this, but there is a possibility that you could, what I would say is Swiss cheese, that the CFD boundary, where you'd start taking holes out for property owners. The downside with that are really twofold. One is when you start taking parcels out, your overall ability to fund all these projects shrinks. You just generate less money over the life of the CFD. The other concern is that once you start extracting parcels out of it, you start having more property owners knock on your door and say, well, what about me? And as you take more parcels out, everyone else who is paying in sees these parcels that are also allegedly going to benefit from these improvements, and they say, well, why would we pay into the CFD if all of these other properties are not? And then oftentimes, it'll just collapse the whole thing. So it is, I get, sorry, back to your original question, like, it is possible, but whether it's advisable, I think, is up for council and staff to decide.
Thank you.
If I could ask, I thought that the--
I thought it's not.
--idea of Swiss cheese map, that there was some legal concern about that, about just excluding people from the middle of the map.
Well, yeah, I'll ask Brian to weigh in on that, but, I mean, there are legal aspects to it, but by the same token, the boundaries of a CFD do not have to be contiguous. The statute does state that.
Yeah, that's right.
That's not what I heard recently.
Right. And Councilmember Adiego, that's, that's correct. I mean, we did, we do have some concerns about creating a Swiss cheese map, and how legally defensible is that? I mean--
I was told that it wasn't legally defensible.
Right.
And I think you were in the room.
Right.
Do you remember the conversation?
Yes, and I do remember saying that--
And now it's not that serious.
No, I do still believe that it is serious. I, that's why--
Maybe, maybe, maybe an expert needs to tell--
Well, that's why I was--
What's allowable?
To ask Brian Forbath to expand on this.
Yeah, yeah, so again, the community city's district, it's a special tax, it's a two-thirds benefit. It's not a special benefit like a assessment district where each property has to receive a special benefit from the improvements that are being financed. There just has to be a reasonable basis for the tax. And so, you know, there have been instances, and there are property, there are CFDs that have been done, where, you know, certain properties are drawn out of the boundaries of it. You know, so I think there is some flexibility to do that, but as it gets sort of more Swiss cheesy, then, you know, it does potentially, you know, open up the CFD for potential challenges.
You know, the problem I have with this is because somebody equated it to gerrymandering. So we all understand gerrymandering because we're politicians, and we understand why that's not okay. How could this be okay? How could, how could people benefit, but because they have a problem with it, they can just be removed and not have to pay? I mean, maybe it's time to look at what is doable. I'm worried about that 30% number. I'm very worried about that. And I had the opportunity to contact, I have, I'm aware of some of the people that didn't respond, and so far, it's not good news, what they're telling me. So my question is, if we go to a ballot and ballots are not turned in, do we need 66% of the ballots returned in the affirmative? If you don't vote, it's the equivalent of a no vote. Is that correct?
No, it's only the votes, it's only the votes that are, that are cast, in terms of the votes that are cast.
Okay.
Yeah, so somebody, if somebody doesn't cast a vote one way or another--
It doesn't work against, all right.
It doesn't, it doesn't work against or for it.
That's a little good news.
So again, going back to the priority list, you're saying, like, how are we going to get to all those projects if we don't have, if it's, there's Swiss cheese, we don't have a lot of consensus or people trying to be part of the CFD, et cetera? So is it too ambitious? Is this priority list too ambitious? Is, I guess, my question? How did we arrive here? Is it something that perhaps people are not there yet because they don't see the benefit, or perhaps there's other groups? And I want to remind everyone, when we're having our business license tax conversation, there were entities, stakeholders, that said that potentially they would be participating in this, and thus we needed to quote-unquote "cut them some slack" on the business license tax, so that they said that they were going to provide, I guess, more support or lead the way, et cetera, on this effort. So is it their interest on the, on the priority list, or is it, this was combined? I'm just trying to get, like, who really gave the input there?
Yeah, I would say that it was a combined effort. I would say, you know, they took from a lot, I know their priorities are very much aligned with sort of the transportation planning efforts that have taken place throughout the years. You know, our transportation plans are really sort of the basis of what that Oyster Point Mobility Group used as sort of the basis for them looking at their priority projects. And so it was really sort of, you know, it was definitely taken from city plans, and it was a combination of sort of looking at the best interests of the city, what are the most impactful projects that will really move the needle, you know, east of 101, and really modernize-- really modernize that area. Right?
Thank you. And then the last point, and then I'll stop hogging the airtime. I just want to, like, I'm reflecting on where, if this weren't not to happen, and maybe Sharon, you can help me with this, in terms of budgeting, right? Like, we're doing a lot of upgrades east of 101, leading to the new dog park, leading to the new area, Oyster Point, Oyster Cove, et cetera. So we're trying to attract a lot of employees, residents, et cetera, out there in that area. If this were not to happen, understandably, a lot of folks, in fact, I always think back to November, when we have our Turkey Run, that we have over 1,500 folks on Saturday mornings out there, and many of them, I sometimes are bicyclists, some of them are employees, and say, there's a ton of potholes. This road is just really bad out here. So I'm thinking, like, if we don't go this route potentially, like, where are we going to get the money, the funding, to be able to have the infrastructure in the roads to be able to match what we're building over there? Like, it's going to be like, we want to make it a destination over there with parks and everything, but how do we get there? If the roads and the transportation, the walkability, the bicycle lanes are not there? Can you give us a snapshot of where we would be if these, I guess, just to put it very basic, the potholes don't get fixed?
Right. Well, I would say we are including street maintenance in this CFD. But if the CFD does not happen, many of these projects will not happen. We won't be doing the nice-to-have improvements. Certainly, we're going to have to maintain the roads, and we would just probably spread out the funds that we're currently using on the residential side of town to accomplish paving on the east side of town. And I know, I have Matt Ruble here from engineering, I can let Matt speak to this.
And I'll just say, I have an issue with that, right? Because residential funds should not be used in other areas of, even though this is still District 5, but it's not, I don't see the equity there because there's other needs in the residential area that are not necessarily in, or in vice versa.
Thank you, Councilmember Flores. Matt Ruble, your principal engineer. So two parts of your question that I'd like to address. First, for the pavement maintenance, the city has a limited amount of pavement funds that we get through state and local funding sources that we use for our payment management program. The city currently has divided the city into six zones where we are looking to do a focused improvements in each one of those zones throughout, you know, a six-year cycle. The challenge is, is each year, we have about $4 to maybe $6 million worth of total funding that's available for this use. And so given that limited funding availability, we're stretching it as far as we can, and the road repair needs east of 101 are just expensive. They're heavily industrial use, the soils are built on bay fill, so it requires more substantial repairs underneath the roadway to repair. So as we do repairs out there, it just eats more and more into our budget. So one of the benefits of the CFD was it could potentially do a big catch-up project, and we can invest $20 to $30 million in order to bring the roads up to current standards that are identified in our payment management program, and then allow ongoing maintenance to be funded as we do with all of our roads, or as we hope to do with all of our roads. Secondly, the vision that was shared for east of 101 is the city's vision. Though, what we envision those corridors to be transformed into is the city's vision as informed by the master plans this council has adopted over the years and through engineering studies we have done. What the CFD is looking to do is enable us to identify the projects that can be delivered in short order, you know, in a reasonable timeframe, and I'll be very careful not to say that because you'll hold me to it, but in a short order, and to deliver them upfront before the development takes place. So by the time the buildings do go into construction and the people want to use them, they're ready to go. Our current model right now is they'll get funded as buildings pull permits, we'll get our transportation impact fees, or they'll be conditioned to developers as part of their conditions of approval. And the implementing of these projects will be slow, it depends on market forces, and they'll come in kind of too late or on the back end of when we would like them. So there's still more needs than the CFD is going to fund. The overall vision of what's going to happen or need to take place is going to have to be addressed. But this potentially gives us a chance to do the very high-impact, relatively lower-cost ones that we can build and see a direct benefit from.
Thank you. Really good explanation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question about the shuttle service? So if we're able to do this, you know, according to the staff report, we're looking at, I'm sorry, 1.6 miles, 1.6 miles of transit-only lanes, is, that's what I'm reading, right? And so the shuttle service, is that going to be commute.org? Or is that something that's going to be run? I just want to know, like, in terms of, are we expanding commute.org? Is that what we're doing in terms--
So this is just for infrastructure, not for services?
Okay, okay.
So we're not going to have our own transit service?
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Then in terms of, just in terms of just potentially what this could be, I mean, the numbers say right now, let me just get back to the staff report, like, we're at 55,000? I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. There's an employment growth of 55,000 by 2040. That's 101,000 new employees going into the ESA 101. And that's going to have a tremendous impact in terms of what we're looking at. And, you know, as our staff is saying, you know, it's expensive to maintain the current level of service now. I remember the previous city manager, when he talked about the original CFD, was this grand kind of concept, right? You know, this is more of a smaller, more focused in terms of potentially what we're looking at. And so, I mean, I do have some concerns in terms of, like, kind of bridging everyone together because we're not sure with the legality of things in terms of, but, you know, that number does stick out in terms of the number of employees that are going to go into the ESA 101, and that is a factor in terms of how we're going to try to tackle this huge issue that's going to be coming down the road.
Yeah. I will say it's, you know, it definitely has been pared down since the first iteration in 2019. I think that one was, I don't know, 280 million maybe in total costs. So this is a much more pared down, much more modest sort of proposal.
We all know that we have finite resources, so, and I agree that it is unfair to use our funds to support all of this, plans for east of 101. However, I'm very concerned if we're putting together a CFD to have Swiss cheese, that concerns me because that doesn't, however it is, they will be really impacted too in terms of getting the, reaping the rewards of having a CFD. So I think it's just not fair. If we're going to have a CFD, everybody should be. No holes, no, nothing of this, yes.
So the proposed boundary maps are contiguous such that there aren't any holes currently in the proposed map. We did, as I think I mentioned with all of you, you know, we did look at the boundaries of the map to make sure that sort of the core area was the area that we're focusing on. So it's not the entirety of the CFD, you know, it's come down a little bit, you know, Shoreline Court is up here, we're not including Shoreline Court, we brought it up a little bit from the canal, just to make sure that where there are enhanced transportation services and infrastructure that's going in there, that it's really in that core area. But currently, as it stands now, we're not proposing any sort of, you know, holes within that contiguous boundary, even though it's allowable legally, right? But the way, and the way I see it, you know, it's, it may be allowable, but I don't think it's, it was my understanding that it's just not something that would really be advisable.
Yeah, although I'm a little shocked, like, Councilmember Adiego, because I always thought that that is not legal, to get those holes in there.
To go back to the priority list, you said it's a lower or scaled-down version from 2019, right?
Right.
Let's just look, for example, at Tier 1. Within Tier 1, is there, are there projects that cover all of that area? Or is it just particular? Tier 1 focuses on the upper north side, et cetera? So I'm just trying to, for example, put it out there, if we were to scale it down even more, because to me, this looks very big still, right? How would that impact the rate?
Right.
Obviously, right? So I'm trying to see that we first kind of pilot it, right? Test it out and see, like, for example, Caltrain and other things that we know that absolutely makes sense, right? Because going Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 in 10 years, I don't know that that's really going to happen, right?
Well, so I will say that the first thing in Tier 1 is the repavement of all 17 miles. So all public streets will be repaved.
Okay, so everyone will get something there.
Right.
And some of those roads are really bad because I used to work in Littlefield--
Oh, yeah.
And that has really moon craters there.
Yeah.
And it's also, like, literally a safety issue, right? Skype--
It is.
Because someone has a flat tire, they--
Cards and bill--
They send the bill to the city, essentially, right?
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, there are a number, a number of the claims submitted to the city every year are for damages to vehicles from roadway conditions.
Right.
So when I look at the renderings for the major boulevards and what could be, it's exciting, and it's a worthy task. And maybe we shouldn't risk it. I think you use the term "too ambitious." Maybe we should look at dialing it back. The best way to sell a second CFD is to have a first CFD be wildly successful. And you probably could look at the map and know where the votes are and which major boulevards you could include to this standard, which would give it a whole new look.
And thank you. You're articulating even more where I was thinking, because then we can say the pilot worked, phase one was successful, right? We got, accomplished what we said we were going to do. And then perhaps other ideas can come there, and we get the buy-in. It's all about the buy-in.
I have a question. Once this is established and somebody's paying a warehouse price, but they tear down the warehouse and now they have R and D, they pay the new rate?
I'll let Brian answer that. I don't want to misspeak.
Yeah, and Susan could jump in too, but yes, normally, the rate is sort of set, it's as a floor, you know, you can never be less than what was originally taxed at because the bonds are sized based on the special tax revenues that are expected. But if, you know, future development happens, there's increased square footage of building, that's an added tax. If there's sort of an upgrade or a shift from, you know, an industrial to life sciences or something like that, we would eventually be able to capture that higher tax rate. Susan, correct me by that all.
No, that's right. Yeah, the tax is set each year, so it's set, it'll be set based on what is actually there and the uses at the time. With the caveat that Brian mentioned, that once bonds are sold, they're sort of the third-party, innocent party is the bond investors who put up millions of dollars to fund that infrastructure. So the formula that we would write would make sure that the revenues were always sufficient to repay their bonds, which means if it went to, if land uses went to a lower tax rate because of a change of land use, there may not be the opportunity to lower the tax.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, all the questions I had were asked, so. Thank you to my colleagues for being so--
So, to my colleagues, to the point of focusing on which projects, if that is something we want to explore, just to focus on particular, I guess, priorities, is there something in particular that we're looking at? I mean, because I, I mean, I can see East Grand and Oyster Point, but those are the bigger numbers too, because those are the main arteries to get in, right? But--
Yeah, but right now, they look good. I mean, not really good, but then I think it's fair. But the ones that are really bad are somewhere not on the East Grand and Oyster Point.
I just think one thing I would offer is, I think in the negotiation or the discussion with all these property owners, we would want to be aware that it's a balance of, if it's scaled back too much, I'm not sure we can sell it. I think some people will vote no because they felt that they would get--
Targeted.
You know, lots of benefit. So if it just turns out to be very limited, I'm not sure, especially the big property owners, I'm just, and you guys had your meetings with them, and so maybe you could just elaborate on that a little bit, because it's a balance of them feeling like, this is going to be great, we're going to get a lot out of this, the more we scale it back. We have already scaled it back by half, at least, but maybe you guys can speak a little bit to what you heard, what you think that--
Can I just say, I understand that risk, but if you are careful with the projects that you keep in it, they're still going to be desirable by some of these major developers who have all this property or some of the major players out there. I don't, I can't imagine they would walk away from it.
And that was my question, to be able to make sure that there was enough from all areas, even if we scale it down, so that there is benefit, impact at that level.
If I may, I think it's kind of hard for me to ask if we should do more or less, because I'm not the one having those conversations, right? You are the two having those conversations. And so with what we have right now, my question is, do you see it as likely to pass?
I think it depends. Right now, we're still, we're still discussing, we're still, first of all, we're still trying to reach that 30%, that's, you know, unknown. We're still trying to really get firm answers from some of those folks. And then there are two large property owners that we are working on right now. If we were to get buy-in from these two property owners who are larger, I think it is likely to pass.
And I'll just add, if, excuse me, if we were not to get buy-in from those two large property owners, there's still a road to approval, it's just a bumpier road.
Right. The margins are smaller.
Kind of like the quality of roads and some of those streets.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know nobody's asking me. Nell Seelander here, Economic and Community Development Director, but I had the pleasure of sitting in on a lot of Christina and Noah's meetings with larger developers and larger property owners. And one of the themes that I heard in those meetings was fairness. There is a real feeling that it's not so much about the improvement provided, because we can all agree that the improvements are needed and critical, and every developer would love to have those improvements at their doorstep. What they're concerned about is the fairness in rent setting, because they have to internalize the cost of the CFD essentially into their base rent rate. Since most of them have triple-net leases with their tenants, they're competing. So if there's a life science development that is not included and doesn't have to factor in that cost, and then one that does in a more Swiss cheese approach or a narrower approach, there will be that issue of fairness, and I think some of those larger property owners may not be as enthusiastic about the CFD despite their desire for the improvements.
These improvements make the adjoining properties more desirable. And I don't think it's just a question of fairness, because if it's, if you have a nicer amenity leading up to your, you know, multimillion-dollar building, it might be easier to get tenants and easier to keep your rent at the level it is.
So what specific direction are you looking for from us?
So I'm thinking, you know, I, we definitely would need some feedback as to whether this is something that we should continue to pursue. We've put in a lot of, you know, time and effort into this. So if this is something that we should continue to pursue, if there's consensus around, yes, this is something we would like you to continuing, continue to have conversations, if you are okay with the approach of like, this potential boundary, which is contiguous and we're not opting anyone out, if you're okay with the route, the rates and how we've tiered them, especially for warehouse industrial, you know, if there's consensus around sort of those larger pieces, we would like to know that, such that we can then move forward with, you know, continuing the outreach and potentially, you know, getting you all to sign on to a petition to kind of kick this off, and scheduling future meetings down the road.
So I'd like to share part of the conversation that Christina and I had, that was on the more positive side of the ledger. And what I told her was, let's not be afraid to call for a vote, because even if we're not successful, this is the most difficult time, one of the most difficult times, to ask developers and property owners, do you want to pay more? Because the industry is a little, you know, weak in the knees, and the developers have empty buildings. So we're asking at a very difficult time where it's hard to sell. If some of that were to turn around, it might be easier. It doesn't mean that we, we could put this to a vote, just the way it is, and if we come up short, that doesn't mean much. That means the area continues to deteriorate to some degree, and there will be another opportunity-- That means the area continues to deteriorate to some degree and there will be another opportunity to ask them yet again.
Yeah, that's true. I agree with that.
I don't think it hurts to try.
Okay.
You know, and, and I do think that there's consensus on it being a contiguous east of 101 area.
Okay.
But any questions that we should address, I think I concur with most of the comments.
Mayor, we do have a public, a public comment for this item.
We can take a public comment now? Thank you.
Tianna Ola?
The appearance of conflict of interest is enough for members of this council to recuse themselves from this discussion. And you haven't done that. Members of this council have a direct conflict of interest. You haven't recused yourself from this discussion. Why haven't you done that? Two of you are sitting up there with over, with millions of dollars in stock, in biotech And you sit on that council and you participate in discussion when you have a conflict of Why haven't you recused yourselves? You're having this discussion later at night because most people are gone home to their children, their families or something like that, and you get to do this? You think we don't know what you're doing? Why haven't you recused yourselves? And not just on this matter either, because we're looking very closely. As you know, why haven't you recused yourselves? Thank you.
So I'd just like to share with my colleagues, I don't want to respond, but so this is a program, the CFD would collect more dollars.
From the biotech industry.
From property owners that would benefit by this and save more dollars.
For the residents.
For the general fund in this side of the town. But I think that, you know, I'm going to ask the city attorney, should I recuse myself? Because I don't want to be in violation.
So I don't believe that the regulations issued by the state agency that implements the California Political Reform Act, which is the Fair Political Practices Commission, which has issued a series of regulations on this topic and a number of advice letters that we have reviewed because of previous questions that have been raised about this issue, that either you, Councilmember Adiego, or Councilmember Nicholas are required to recuse yourselves under those regulations for this or other matters, generally coming before the council related to the biotech industry. As new matters come up, if there may eventually become a situation or a matter in which the regulations would require a different interpretation, but based on the review that, that has, that I in my office have undertaken and including in correspondence with the FPPC, I don't believe that either of you is required to recuse yourself despite the fact that both of you have stock interests in biotech companies that, that operate in the area that we're talking about.
The stocks that I have don't operate in this area and so therefore.
Sorry.
And so therefore, we have talked about this.
Yes, exactly.
So I guess it leaves me. So would it be prudent to ask the FPPC to look at this issue and whether I should be participating?
We certainly.
Get an answer in time that.
So right, my recent experience with advice letters from the FPPC is that it could take four to six months to get a response from them. We certainly could take the information that we have right now, outline for them factually what, what we're considering with the CFD and also provide them with the information about your interests and ask them for an opinion about whether or not you're precluded from participating. And I'd be happy to draft that letter.
I think we need to do that.
Okay.
I think we should just, yeah, I agree. Put down, put that to sleep.
And then if it takes too long, if it's not in a timely manner, then I, I won't participate in the vote. I guess I shouldn't participate in the discussion. Well, I have faith that, you know, my colleagues can shepherd this to conclusion.
Through the mayor. So Christina, so I am very supportive of this repaving of the city streets of the 17 miles. That definitely is priority for me, right? We are going to get, I mean, we're opening up grand opening possibly in November of this brand new park, et cetera. I started my comments earlier tonight on that. And also the Caltrain piece for that. And I mean, there's pieces of there that make so much sense with everything that we're doing. The funding, I think Matt alluded to that, with all the other plans that we're connecting the dots on, on funding, right? Especially the bike lanes, when we talk about everything that's happening on that. So that's why I'm supportive of, of giving it a shot, moving forward on that. But I still would like, if you continue on these conversations with the 32% unknown, ask them a little, bribe them a little bit more about this priority, priority list and see where we land on that. Are there stuff that could really wait that is, is ambitious, it's, it's nice to have versus we really need to move on this, et cetera? Those are my comments.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And I will say that, you know, there have been projects here that, you know, have been altered or shaped based on property owner feedback. Yeah.
Thank you. And I also want to say thank you so much for your work on this. I know you've been working very, very hard, you and, and Lighthouse and all the city staff for, for doing all that, reaching out to over 300 property owners, definitely.
Yeah.
Probably not the easiest thing going on in South San Francisco right now, but it's, you know, thank you for your work on this. I am optimistic, just looking at the projects and what is envisioned for the east of 101 area. I mean, it will be the best place to work in the entirety of San Mateo County if we are able to do this. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to administrative business item number 17 is a report regarding an ordinance amending chapter 8.27 mandatory organic waste disposal reduction of Title 8 of the South San Francisco Municipal Code relating to organic waste disposal and related regulations pursuant to Senate Bill 1383, item 17A is the ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Coleman, Vice Mayor Flores, and City Councilmember Simon Ristic Aaron, management analyst in your Public Works Department. I'm here this evening with a brief presentation of our SB 1383 ordinance amendment for our mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. In this presentation, I will be providing just a brief background on California Senate Bill 1383, the adoption of our city ordinance, and the ordinance amendments that staff is requesting here this evening. Senate Bill 1383 is a California law aimed at reducing organic waste in landfills to fight climate change. It requires residents and businesses to separate organic waste, such as food scraps and yard trimmings, from regular trash. The goal is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, particularly methane, by divert, by diverting organic waste from landfills into composting or recycling programs. The law also sets targets to recover edible food and get it to those in need. SB 1383 was signed into law in 2016, establishing statewide targets, 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, and 75% reduction by 2025. In preparation for SB 1383 regulations going into effect in January of 2022, the City of South San Francisco adopted its enforceable ordinance in November of 2021 and have collaborated with South San Francisco Scavengers to increase residential and commercial compliance with the requirements and provide outreach and education for SB 1383. Enforcement began in 2024, and the city is near full compliance for single-family households and has achieved compliance for the majority of multifamily and commercial generators. City staff at South San Francisco Scavenger are continuing to diligently address all remaining non-compliant generators. Prior to ordinance adoptions in California, CalRecycle provided jurisdictions with template options to follow. Since South San Francisco's ordinance adoption, city staff at South San Francisco Scavenger recognized some areas requiring amendments to better align with the operations and reporting of SB 1383 implementation being performed here in South San Francisco and to maintain compliance with CalRecycle. The proposed amendments include the definition section of the ordinance where the term designated source, separated organic waste facility, doesn't apply to the processing facility at South San Francisco Scavenger, therefore will be deleted from the list of defined terms within the ordinance. The self-hauler term will be more clearly defined outlining the personnel and equipment to transport solid waste, organic waste, or recyclable materials. Sections regarding enrollment will also be amended so that generators are not automatically enrolled and with specific container sizes, but instead at their discretion with container sizes that best support the volumes of trash, organics, and recyclables they generate. Lastly, the city's ordinance currently offers four waiver options. De minimis and physical space waivers are offered to commercial properties, and the self-haul and collection frequency waivers are offered to both residential and commercial properties. This amendment will remove the collection frequency waiver option so that all generation, all generators adhere to the weekly collection of trash, organics, and recyclables, which aligns with the city's franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger. Removing this waiver option will also prevent trash overflow issues, increased littering, illegal dumping, and recycling and organics contamination in South San Francisco. And with that, staff recommends the city council approve the presented amendments to the city's municipal code. That is the conclusion of my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions. And we also have Paul Formosa and Doug Button here from South San Francisco Scavenger to help answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
I didn't understand the self-haul concept.
So right now, the way that the ordinance is written, it doesn't specify who will be self-hauling if they did apply for a waiver, but it, if this amendment is approved, it would specify that the personnel of the generator that's.
The rest are unsecured.
Correct. Their personnel and their vehicles will be transporting whatever waste they are self-hauling, not hiring somebody else. They will be hauling it.
So are we talking food waste?
Correct.
So where would you haul food waste?
They can take it to another processing facility throughout the peninsula. But they would need to provide the city with documentation in order to do that prior to, prior to doing that. They would need to be approved beforehand with that waiver.
I guess if they were a very large generator, they could take it to a compost facility, which tend to be out of the immediate Bay Area.
Correct.
All right.
Do we have any questions?
So moved. There's a motion that's needed, right?
Yeah.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Adiego?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagalas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Aye.
And Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to administrative business item number 18 is a report regarding awarding a construction contract to Bayside Stripe and Seal Incorporated of Petaluma, California for the citywide school traffic safety improvement project number ST 2402, bid number 2694 in an amount not to exceed $677,930, authorizing a total construction contract authority budget of $745,723. Item number 18A is a resolution.
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. I'm Jeffrey Chal, your senior civil engineer. Tonight, I'm presenting staff's recommendation to award a construction contract to Bayside Stripe and Seal for the citywide school traffic safety improvement project, which includes the implementation of the 15 mile per hour school zones. This graph shows that you're more likely to get seriously injured or killed by vehicles traveling at higher speeds. By lowering the speed limits around our schools to 15 miles per hour, we can help protect the children, students, school staff, and families. And a, sorry, and a refresh around the current state law, as only roadways around the schools that fit within these listed requirements are allowed for the speed limit reduction. The requirements are that the roadways need to be within close proximity to the schools with only one traveling in each direction and the posted speed limit that does not exceed 30 miles per hour. Based on these state law requirements, staff turned at 13 schools within, within the city and 33 roadways qualifies for the school zone speed limit reduction as shown on this map. With city council direction, we took an aggressive approach to legally include as many qualified roadways as possible for this 15 mile per hour school zone. I'd like to point out that, that previous 15 mile per hour school zone has been running place since 2017 in front of Sunshine Gardens Elementary, and we have received positive feedback from school staff since. And just last year, our city council took a step forward with this effort and passed a resolution declaring a speed limit of 15 miles per hour when children are present for, for remaining qualified roadways. So with last year's resolution and this project, we are moving forward with the objectives of the city's general plan and Vision Zero goals. In addition to installing over 200 new speed limit and school signs around our city, other improvements as part of the project include enhancing pedestrian safety at crosswalks by upgrading standard crosswalk with higher visibility crosswalks, adding advanced limit lines to alert drivers to stop before these crosswalks. The photos on the left show before and after examples of the crosswalk improvements at the intersection of Linden and Aspen. The project will also include installation of rectangular, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at uncontrolled crossings to improve visibility and safety. With these improvement in the 15 mile school zone, we are focusing on providing safer route to and from school. The construction of this project was advertised and two competitive bids were received. SAR Construction submitted a little bit of $595,000 as shown in this table on the left. However, after a thorough review by city staff and the city attorney's office, it was determined that SAR Construction did, did not meet the bid proposal requirement to perform at least 55% of the work as the prime contractor. And as a result, SAR Construction bid was, was rejected. Staff recommends moving forward with the second lowest bidder, Bayside Stripe and Seal, who met all the bid proposal requirements and submitted a responsive and responsible bid. The proposed concerning cost of $745,000 will be funded by the citywide traffic impact fee fund. At the direction of city council, as mentioned, a resolution to implement, to implement these 15 mile per hour school zone was passed last year. And over the past year, staff has regularly met with community through multiple city events to inform them of upcoming speed limit changes as well, as well as providing the project's information through the city's many outreach platforms. This outreach effort will continue before and after construction of the project. City staff has also been working closely with both the school staff and the school district, and they have all been very supportive and advocating for the speed limit reduction. Through this partnership, the individual school has also begun notifying and educating their communities about the upcoming, about the upcoming speed limit changes. If city council awards this construction contract tonight, we anticipate completing the project by early next year. In conclusion, staff recommends city council to award construction contract to Bayside Stripe and Seal for this project. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I remember when I, when I served on that school liaison, this is an issue that I brought up and we moved it forward. I appreciate it. You know, it's, it's one thing to approve lowering down the speed limit, you know, it's the hope that people actually follow it, right? Just because we put the speed limit over there doesn't mean we're going to see like drivers actually slow down. And my concern is, it's great that we're putting this, but I think there's also needs to be additional things we need to do to slow down drivers. You know, one of the things I keep harping about this is that Westboro doesn't qualify because of state law, right? And there needs, we need to do something about that to reduce the speed. And I've kind of mentioned some ideas that I had. And so let me kind of just kind of go back a little bit in terms of the, of the contract. So the first one, obviously, didn't qualify because the second one, in terms of their qualifications, you, you're like, okay, this is because it fits the qualification, we're going to accept it. Was there a thought of maybe rebidding it out there because, because there's only one left in terms of the, the proposed bid?
No. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Nagalas. In terms of reviewing the second lowest bidder, they've, they met all the bid proposal requirements versus the, obviously, the first bidder did not. In terms of reviewing the, the bid itself from the second bidder. In terms of reviewing the bid itself from the second bidder, our independent engineer, our professional designer, reviewed their unit prices and found that it was fair and reasonable within the market. So we felt comfortable proceeding with recommending awarding to the second lowest bidder.
And I know you always give us numbers in terms of what the bid is, what the engineer's estimated cost, and what the actual cost is going to be, and sometimes it's a little higher than the actual engineer's cost. But what you are saying for this particular bid, that it's within, what was the terminology used, within a budget, but within the market?
Within the market values, yeah.
Within the market value. Okay. All right. That's all I have to add.
Through the mayor, can you remind me, I must have missed it. How did JS and Skyline did not? Is it just because they're in Daly City jurisdiction?
That's correct. They're in Daly City jurisdiction. We have contacted Daly City staff, and they are looking to see if they could do something similar as this.
Okay, but at this point in time, they couldn't have an agreement or work to get this?
Yeah, sorry. They were...
Because those are Daly City streets, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Even though they're in the South San Francisco Unified School District?
Correct.
And, but Monteverde is included?
Monteverde is included.
Because half of the school is in San Bruno and half of the school is in South City. Okay. Yeah, I'm very excited that it includes Mills Montessori as well and St. Veronica's as well. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's really a great thing. It's just that, you know, how far apart was the engineer's estimate done and the actual bid? Was it engineer's estimate done a long time ago, and that's why the costs have changed? And that's, I think, your analysis. Why is it so desperate?
Another great question, Councilmember Nicholas. We, engineer estimate is usually done before the bid, so this took place approximately six months ago. So the market does fluctuate depending on kind of when we bid about the project and how many bids we receive. So it's just, it's a fluctuating, it's a market conditions that is sometimes is hard to estimate.
And Bayside has always worked with us, and how's the rating of their work? Aren't they the ones who paved the ones that we had problems with? No? Okay. Because I always hear Bayside, I thought, you know, maybe I know that they have done work for us in the past.
Matt Ruble, your principal engineer. Bayside's one of the striping contractors that does a fair amount of work in our city. They're currently doing work east of 101 as part of our bus shelter project right now, and we've had nothing but good work with them as far as accommodating last minute changes in order to improve the project.
Thank you.
Great. I think this is needed, and I'm glad we can be moving forward with it.
And it's a safety issue, so.
It's a safety issue. I do have one comment. It's marginally related. So in Altalima Middle School, a lot of students leave school through a park, and there is an intersection, I think it's San Felipe and Camaritas, which is on the southernmost portion of that park where there is a stop. There's a stop sign on, I don't know what you call it, on one way but not the other way. On the horizontal, sorry, on the vertical, there's a stop sign. On the horizontal, there's not. Camaritas and San Felipe, I've been told by many of the neighbors that this is dangerous and that they are requesting a stop sign there if we could include that in maybe a future discussion.
Definitely. No, that's a great feedback. We'll definitely consider.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
I'll second Councilman Nigales's motion. I know he's very proud of this.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Nigales?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego?
Yes.
And Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Moving on to item number 19 is a report regarding awarding a construction contract to G. Portolotto and Company Incorporated of San Carlos, California, for the 2024 Concrete and Base Repair Project, project number ST 2402, bid number 2696, in an amount not to exceed $722,604 for a total construction budget of $867,124.80. Item 19A is a resolution.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Adriana Hosfeld, your Senior Civil Engineer. Tonight, I will be presenting on the 2024 Concrete and Base Repair Project for awarding a construction project. This pavement management program map details the organization of the city into designated areas with the objective of completing a surface seal project in one area each year. Matt Ruble touched on this earlier. The cycle will restart after the completion of the 2029 area. We are finishing up construction where the map says "in progress", which is concentrated in the downtown area. Next up will be the 2024 area, which is outlined in red on this map. Here is a zoomed-in map of the 2024 area. It includes the Avalon neighborhood. The surface seal project will be split into two phases. The current requested construction award is for the first phase, which will consist of concrete and base repairs. The next phase will be the surface seal, expected to be constructed in 2025. Here is an example of a base repair. Their purpose is to structurally support the pavement base prior to surface seal application. Here is an example of a concrete repair. Their purpose is to prevent water infiltration and to encourage proper drainage on the street. The project will include public notification, traffic control, concrete repairs, and base repairs. When construction is completed, the roads in the 2024 area will be improved and ready for surface seal in spring or summer of 2025. Public outreach will include coordination with nearby businesses and residents, advance notice, posted no parking signs and door hangers, and planned traffic control and detours. Outreach will be conducted in multiple languages. The design for this project was completed in summer 2023, and we are currently in the bid and award phase. Construction is expected to begin in fall or winter 2024, with closeout expected early 2025. The bidding process for this project falls under procurement method one. Competitive bidding for construction projects where cost is generally the sole determining factor. Staff received three bids on August 14th. The lowest responsible bidder is G. Portolotto and Company, and their bid is for $722,000. This is about $40,000 below the engineer's estimate of $765,000. After applying a 20% contingency, the total construction budget is $867,000. Measure A will fund this construction budget, and there will be no change to the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget. In conclusion, staff recommends awarding the construction contract to G. Portolotto and Company. Thank you for your time, and if there's any questions or comments, I can address.
I don't have a question, but Ms. Hosfeld, it's always wonderful when the project comes in less than the engineer's estimate. I don't have any questions for you.
We love that. Thank you for the comment.
Any other comments? I'm looking forward to Great Roads.
We love that.
Thank you.
I move to go ahead with a staff recommendation.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nigales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to item number 20 is a report regarding a resolution authorizing the City of South San Francisco's application for $5 million from the State of California's Local Housing Trust Fund Program and a resolution approving funding commitment letters for Rotary Gardens and 1051 Mission Road.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Nell Seelander, Economic and Community Development Director. This will be a quick item.
You cleared the room.
They only provide moral support for each other over there in public works, I guess. So the item before you this evening is actually two resolutions to effectuate an application for the state's Local Housing Trust Fund Grant Program. Approval of these resolutions would authorize the city to apply for $5 million in a state grant that can match the city's investments in affordable housing. We received a $2.4 million award of this grant in 2021 for Eden's proposed senior affordable project at 201 Baden. So we have a track record of having received this grant, and we are applying again. This time, the grant is more competitive, and we're applying for the maximum award, $5 million, if council authorizes that tonight. This is a dollar-for-dollar matching grant, and if council approves the associated resolutions, we will apply the match to money we've already spent. $2 million that the city provided for Bridge's 1051 Mission Road project at the PUC site, $566,000 that the city has already committed to Rotary's senior housing project at 500 Linden, and then also the $6.8 million that the city spent to acquire three properties on Grand Avenue. So we are not spending any new dollars. We are simply asking the state to match that investment. So the two actions, the two resolutions authorize us to apply and then also commit, if we receive the $5 million, if it's awarded, and we receive the full $5 million, $2 million of that would go back to Bridge to match that initial investment. They're still in need of pre-development dollars to keep their design work moving forward as they seek other outside financing. $566 would go to Rotary to match that money we've already invested, and then that would leave 2.5, about 2.5 million, uncommitted. So it's really advantageous in this grant program to pre-commit some of the funds you're going to receive, although in theory, we could just ask for $5 million uncommitted. But because of how competitive this grant has become, they really like to see more than 40% of those funds already committed. So we're saying, okay, we'll commit half of those funds to projects we've already funded, leave the remaining 2.5 uncommitted. Of that 2.5 million, we can spend up to a quarter of $1 million, $250,000, on administrative expenses for dealing with these projects, for doing the staff work involved in administering these grants and spending the funds. And then the remainder can be spent on new construction of affordable rental housing. This is only for rental housing, and it has to serve incomes below 80% of the area median income. And for information's sake, for a family of four, that's $156,000 a year. So this can only serve households of four making under $156,000 a year. So it's a great grant program. It's fairly flexible. We hope to submit a competitive application at the end of next week. And what we're looking for this evening from council is to approve that application and also to pre-commit the $2 million to Bridge and the $566,000 to Rotary. Again, just matching dollars we've already spent. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Great effort. Why not?
Why not? All right. Do we have a motion?
Are we taking this separately?
Yeah, I was going to read the resolution separately so the council can vote. So item 20A is a resolution of City Council of the City of South San Francisco authorizing the city's application to the State of California's Local Housing Trust Fund Program for $5 million to support affordable housing production within the city.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nigales?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution, item number 20B, is a resolution of the City Council of the City of South San Francisco approving letters of intent to fund two affordable rental housing projects with local housing trust fund if awarded.
So moved.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nigales?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Diego?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicholas?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to items from council committee reports and announcements.
We have to give Councilmember Nigales an update. There was one issue that he asked us to bring to the liaison, so maybe you could tell him the good news.
Yes, the term skips me. So...
Something bus.
The fun bus, the...
Walk.
Walking bus?
This was a bike.
If I may, the bike bus.
I've been doing a lot of walking, but... Thank you. The South San Francisco Unified School District and City Council Liaison Committee, there was an agenda item on the bike bus, which is essentially gathering groups of students on their way to school in the morning and biking together with their guardian, parents, family members. This could be done in several different communities, neighborhoods, schools. This is an idea that was put on the agenda by Councilmember Nigales. The committee found it favorable. They just are going to look to make sure that it aligns with Bike World Bike Day or Bike to Everywhere Day, which happens around May. So staff will bring up how to operationalize that. But thank you for your idea to be able to move that forward.
Even though you're not there, you're still having an impact. He carried it for you.
Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate it.
Of course. I just wanted to mention, the Peninsula Division of the California League of Cities is having a climate change event coming up September 25th at the Farallon Room at Skyline College in San Bruno. We're looking forward to welcoming Assemblymember I.A. M. Papin, Coastal Cities Issues Group Chair, Bay Conservation and Development Commission Board Member, as well as Coastal Commission representatives to discuss climate change and sea level rise impacts in the Bay Area and state. Just wanted to offer that to my colleagues if you are interested in attending. It will be a noon event, 11:30 to 1:30, again at Skyline College. Marie will put you in touch with the links, et cetera. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on to closed session. Item 21 is a closed session conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property is 366 Grand Avenue, APN number 012-312-310. Agency negotiator, Nell Seelander, Economic and Community Development Director, and Ernesto Lucero, Economic Development Manager. Negotiating party, Stacy S. Dobos Trust, under negotiations price and term.